Good afternoon. Want to call back in session the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, November 14, 2017, meeting and thank all who've joined us for the afternoon session. Actually, we still have a portion of the morning session remaining. We didn't adjourn until almost 2:00 from the portion of the morning session. Though I know there are a number of you that are here on items that are on the afternoon agenda, so we're going to do our best to try to manage our way through that. And the reason for the consultation up here was to see if there was any shuffling that could occur. But I think in light of certainly the attendance and the speakers, we're going to keep it in the order. We'll do our best to, again, move expeditionally, but also take into account the testimony and certainly the board's deliberations on the matters on the agenda. So with that, we'll go ahead and call the roll to reestablish quorum in session. We did have a closed session, nothing to announce out of that, I don't believe. Is that right, Ms. Trevino?
Right.
Okay. All right. So flow call roll, let's get started.
Okay. Supervisors Frost?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Serna?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thanks. And I would just make an announcement that we've been given information that there...I know there's a number of folks that are going to want to address the board off-agenda on the In Home Supportive Services, but unfortunately, someone who has a green Honda Civic, you don't need to jump up right now, but you're double parked at the SEIU office at Capitol Avenue, and if you don't get the car moved or make arrangements, somebody's going to move it for you and it may cost you a bit. So I don't know who that might be, so you may want to check that out and get word or get the car moved. So also, I would just note that if you're here to address any item on the agenda, we're not on the agenda. We have a number of speaker forums, but would encourage you to fill out a speaker forum, and then we'll call upon you as we get to those agenda items. So without any more delay, we'll move right into the remaining portion of the morning agenda and thank those folks for their patience since they waited all morning and now back this afternoon at 3:20. Okay, thanks.
Okay. That would be item 35, the Sacramento County Children's Coalition 2018 Work Plan.
Okay. Back again, thanks for your patience as well.
Sure, no problem. Thank you for accommodating us by allowing us to come and speak this afternoon.
Yes.
So hopefully I have a PowerPoint coming up.
Get that up.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, good afternoon again, Chairman Natoli and the rest of the Board of Supervisors. I'm going to...I know we have a packed agenda this afternoon, so we'll try and get through this as quickly as possible while sharing the pertinent information about the work plan that we have planned for 2018. Really briefly here, I'll just touch on a brief overview of the coalition's work, talk about the subcommittee work plans, most importantly, probably address some resources constraints and some upcoming strategies. And also, we don't want to leave here without some requests from support from the Board of Supervisors. We'll have time for questions and wrap up at the end. So the Sacramento County Children's Coalition is really privileged and excited to present our work plan for 2018. The information presented today was written really to provide the Board of Supervisors with an understanding of the scale and scope of work we have planned for the upcoming year, understand some of the coalition's resources constraints and strategies, and help identify a path forward around some requests we have for support from the Board of Supervisors, which I'll cover towards the end of our presentation today. So members appointed to the coalition by the Board of Supervisors play a really vital and key role in the coalition's operations by making decisions about the direction and work of the coalition as a whole. Members serve on four standing committees of the coalition, as you see on the overhead there. The executive committee, which is comprised of the board chair, vice chair, and the chairpersons for the three other subcommittees listed in front of you there, as well as members serve on other committee advisory groups such as Human Services Coordinating Council and First Five Advisory Committee. Members also participate in other community meetings and report pertinent information to the general membership. So I'm going to just provide a brief overview of each of the four subcommittees. So in 2017, the general membership began development of a strategic plan to improve our ability to identify, evaluate, and act on children's issues in a way that best takes advantage of all our available resources and staffing. In 2018, the executive committee will complete the strategic plan for approval by the coalition. Some of the activities that we do have planned are, again, finalizing our strategic plan, developing action plans to implement, which is a key and maybe something that has...we've all identified as something that may have been lacking in the past, document a complete strategic plan, and deliver a comprehensive plan document to general membership as well as the Board of Supervisors. Our timeline, as you can see in front of you, for our goals, strategies, and tactics, we'll have that complete by April of 2018. We'll have action plans in place by June of 2018. And we request to present to the strategic plan to the Board of Supervisors sometime around that same summer of 2018, so roughly around July. I'm going to move on to the CPS Oversight Committee, which is one of the three subcommittees in addition to the executive committee. The CPS Oversight Committee will continue its regular activities of reviewing critical CPS cases to evaluate efforts of all service providers involved in each case, as well as interview child welfare assistance partners, including county CPS, to learn about services and how they can be delivered to the community. Our findings from these activities will be presented in the Oversight Committee's annual report to the Board of Supervisors. In addition to this, the Oversight Committee representatives will participate in the Child Death Review Team's recommended Child Abuse and Neglect Time Limited Subcommittee, which Sheila Boxley discussed this morning with CAPSIE. We'll examine CDRT data from 69 child abuse and neglect fatalities that occurred between 2004 and 2015. And again, that's a part of what was discussed this morning with Sheila Boxley's CAPSIE group. Using the information gleaned from this subcommittee, we will develop a proposal for a series of community meetings which invite representatives from various child-serving systems to discuss communication issues and barriers to collaboration between systems and identify solutions that may reduce the instances of critical incidents and child deaths. Now, this was formally recommended as a blue-ribbon panel, but after some discussion, we've decided to recommend this as a set of community stakeholder forums to get a much, I guess, broader look at some of those issues and how we can help address those issues as a coalition. So the Oversight Committee will address this as a comprehensive proposal which will be submitted to the Board of Supervisors for endorsement sometime in 2019. The CPS Oversight Committee, excuse me, has also expressed a desire to resurrect the Children's Report Card, which was formerly published by the Children's Coalition in partnership with other contributing organizations. And we tend to explore the idea of a...sorry, we tend to explore the idea with the Children's Coalition's general membership by the end of 2018. This is something that was done...the Children's Report Card was something that used to be done or produced by CAPSIE and a couple of other organizations. There is now another organization which we have sort of just had a brief informational meeting with, who also produces a Children's Report Card. And the organization's name is Children's Now. So we're not looking to create more work for ourselves or other organizations. If there is already an organization out there that is presenting a report card on the health of children in each county in the state of California, we'd just piggyback on what they've already researched and completed and compiled, which will help us, again, set forth our strategic plan. So moving on to the last of the four...I'm sorry, the third of the four subcommittees, the Policy and Advocacy Group. So last month, the coalition endorsed a report and a series of recommendations written by our Policy and Advocacy Committee related to the implementation of the continuum of care reform in Sacramento County. So this report was submitted to the Board of Supervisors as an attachment to a letter of support for services to support foster youth impacted by these system changes. The Policy and Advocacy Committee is committed to continuing to follow the implementation of CCR in Sacramento County and will produce a second report in 2018, which provides updates around the implementations of CCR in Sacramento County and how children and families are affected by these system changes. We do recognize, and just in talking with other partners, agencies, and organizations who are actively involved in the continuum of care reform, that there are a lot of obstacles and challenges, not the least of which is finding suitable resource families willing to take on some of the children that are going to be in need of services due to the continuum of care reform changes. The committee will also work to identify other current system...I'm sorry, other current issues affecting the health and well-being of children in the county, which may result in letters to the Board of Supervisors communicating policy and/or budget recommendations. And finally, the Children's Trust Fund Committee will continue its regular activities of monitoring the balance of the Sacramento County Children's Coalition Trust Fund and reviewing the performance of and approving invoices for its contract with the Child Abuse Prevention Center, the county's designated Child Abuse Prevention Council. In addition to this, the committee will continue the development of an RFP for services that will connect youth preparing to live independently to life skills training programs. The committee intends to release the RFP, make recommendations for awards, and execute agreements by the end of 2018. The executive committee feels this is a really critical part, and it sort of plays a hand in many other issues facing our county. Mainly, we have a lot of youth who, even once they turn 18, even when they age out of foster care, they unfortunately have not been living in an environment nor been provided with life skills training that will enable them to be effective members of the community. So it's really important, we feel, to have this RFP in place, make recommendations for awards, and execute agreements, and I'm sure we'll get some great proposals once that RFP is released. Now, some of the resources and constraints and strategies of the coalition. The Sacramento County Children's Coalition has capacity for up to 30 Board of Supervisor-appointed members. Currently, we only have 15 seats filled. Each of the members serve on working committees, which are made up of coalition members and some non-members, and those subcommittees are the three committees or, sorry, the four committees that we just discussed earlier. One of the strengths and benefits of the coalition is that members comprise a wide variety of diversity and expertise. Currently, we have members who represent National Human Development Foundation, Board of State and Community Corrections, Education Consultants, Center for Fathers and Families, Sacramento Delta Foundation, State Department of Education, CPS Social Workers, Pro Youth and Families, Mental Health Consultants, SETA Head Start, Disability Rights Advocates, Sutter Health, Twin Rivers Unified School District, Homeless and Foster Youth Liaison, and professionals from the medical community and county child protective services. The Children's Trust Fund receives funding from various sources and distributes grants to organizations providing child abuse prevention and intervention services. Individual and charitable contributions or grants can be made to the Children's Trust Fund. And also, the coalition receives staff support from DHHS at a level of .5 FTE. So we have a part-time person who definitely assists us with the operations of the coalition. Oops, I'm sorry. So some constraints the coalition operates under. We do have challenges with consistent participation and meeting Brown Act quorum requirements. Ideally, that would be an easy fix by just having those who have volunteered for the coalition just to be able to commit to showing up to the meetings, which, number one, when you have 15 individuals, anywhere from 15 to 30 individuals, for a volunteer work, although we're all passionate about it, but finding a time where everyone is available has really been the challenge. We also have some younger members. I like to think of myself as one of the younger members, but apparently my kids tell me otherwise. But we have younger members who also would like to be able to participate remotely, and sometimes that can be a challenge, and obviously the Brown Act quorum is not able to accommodate that. So that's just one of the challenges that we have. Also, we have occasionally more staff support that may be required, depending on the number of projects that we take on at any given time, and challenges with filling some of our available seats. We do have a youth seat. That's really challenging to fill that seat. Obviously, we want to hear from the youth if we're a coalition for children and families.
It's a what seat?
A youth seat. I'm sorry, for a young person. Sorry.
It's okay.
Still coming over a sore throat here. But finding youth that are able to get to our meetings and participate. Transportation, getting out of school a little earlier, finding a meeting time that can accommodate them, that can be a challenge. And we've also had a little challenge filling one of our seats, which is drug, alcohol, and prevention, as well as some other seats. Economic development, housing, out-of-home care, sports and recreation, violence prevention and treatment. All those seats have historically been difficult to fill for a variety of reasons.
How many people are on the coalition overall?
Currently, we have 15.
15. And half of them you can't get to come to the meetings?
It's been a challenge. We've lost some members as well who have voluntarily sort of excused themselves just because of the, sometimes, the commitment. So that's going to be one of our asks today, is if...asking if there is...we're basically seeking support, which I'll get to shortly in a minute, but we're seeking support to have engaged members of the community who have the ability to participate on the coalition as well. That's part of what we're doing, that's part of our strategic plan, but we're also open for other ideas on how we can fill those seats or where we can look to to fill those seats. All right. Some of our strategies to mitigate some of the constraints include, as I just discussed, exploring ways to increase membership and member participation. Ideally, what we are looking for is members who can participate on the coalition, who have experience in decision-making and quite simply getting things done, whether they be nonprofit organizations, CEOs, directors, looking for those really engaged, active members who also have connections that will allow us to have effective partnerships with other organizations. Also, looking to indoctrinate new members through a comprehensive orientation process, which has been lacking. We do feel that's important, to make sure that members who do sign up know that they are...know what exactly they're signing up to do, as opposed to having another bullet point that they can put on their resume, that they know what it is the coalition has tasked with doing, and that they have capacity to do that. Also, one of our strategies is to increase visibility and engagement within the community, enhance collaboration efforts with similar missioned organizations. In other words, if someone approaches us about an issue they would like the coalition to assist them with or endorse them with, if there is already an established organization in Sacramento County that is uniquely qualified to address that, the collaboration can also simply be referring that person who is requesting that support to another organization who's better equipped to assist them. And also looking to expand funding for the Children's Trust Fund from additional sources. And in closing, and I certainly will take questions, but in closing, I just wanted to say, the Children's Coalition really wishes to thank the Board of Supervisors for their support. Really, all the work that we've done, just the fact that we exist, really could not be done without your support. We'd like to request the continued support of the Board of Supervisors, county department leadership, and staff in the community by asking to bring issues to our attention for review, consideration, or work. Obviously, as part of our coalition, it is our job, which we will be doing through some of our community stakeholder forums, to find out what those issues are. However, if there are other issues that the coalition may not be aware of that are very important to Sacramento County, having those issues brought to our attention would be really beneficial for us developing that strategic plan. Also, asking to include the Sacramento County Children's Coalition in a budget process as an advisory role, and really support our efforts to maintain a healthy and active membership, whether that be helping us achieve quorum, conduct coalition business, and again, as I mentioned, referring new high-energy members to the coalition. So inclusion, that sort of brings us to our shameless plug here. Once again, if there are any members...and again, we had some great groups that spoke earlier this morning, from the Black Child Legacy Campaign, the Child Death Review Team. A lot of things that we do in Sacramento County, as you all are very well aware of, sometimes we operate in silos. If there are folks who are doing great work, whose expertise, knowledge, and experience would be really beneficial to furthering the coalition's mission and goals, we have 15 open seats available, so we'd be more than happy to take any recommendations from the Board of Supervisor or anyone else to help us fill those roles.
Thank you for the presentation. Very good. And we have some questions or comments. Supervisor Peters?
Yeah. It seems to me that your membership is probably the most important thing you're asking about, and I would suggest you meet with Paul Lake or someone he designates to talk about the kind of people, the areas that they represent, to revamp the committee, and maybe, you know, maybe the areas they represent aren't the ones that are needed now. Maybe they were 15 years ago or whenever the committee was put together. But I'd look at that, and then he would also know other groups that might have come together recently and be interested in your...
Yes.
And then maybe after you get to that point, Paul, you know, run it by the chiefs of staff and just make sure that...
We will do that, Supervisor.
Yeah. I mean, that's the best way to do it. We all have trouble getting people on commissions, trust me.
Yes.
And then if you require them to be high-energy, that's even more difficult.
That's a whole nother...thank you. That's a great recommendation. Thank you very much for that. I think what we found is that of the 15 members, everyone is passionate about children and families. Everyone is particularly passionate about what they do. For example, at Pro Youth and Families, we're really champions for children being advocates. We have medical professionals who are really champions for healthy children, you know, Child Abuse Prevention Council members.
I understand. Probably the words to talk to Paul about.
Yes, thank you.
Yep. I just had a follow-on question. One of the committees here, the CPS Oversight Committee, and I know the role that that group played, certainly when we had some very tragic child deaths, probably going back 20 years ago, and coming forward, and I know that committee played a very key role and continues, obviously, to provide that oversight. But any thoughts about how, again, does the work that's given to that Oversight Committee, are folks feeling that they have a full plate, or they feel like that the connections aren't there between maybe the community and the coalition, or I don't know about staff and the...so I'm curious, just if you could just briefly respond to that, because that, to me, I mean, all these things are very important, sort of the advocacy and the oversight for Children's Trust Fund. But when I think about the Oversight Committee and the work of that group a number of years ago, and continuing, to me, that's very important. That's the community eyes of folks who are dedicated to the, you know, elements of, you know, looking at, you know, some of the things we heard about earlier today, as you said, the at-risk situations, but some, you know, were actually children not just in peril, but may have, you know, died and/or other conditions. So I'm curious as to just, you know, what the take of the coalition and/or the committee is on the work that they're currently tasked with, and whether people are feeling fulfilled in that, or that there's, you know, are there other thoughts you might have?
Yeah. I'm not sure if the staffing or if they're feeling overwhelmed is an issue. I think the CPS Oversight Committee members, and I'll defer to anyone else on my team here who can speak more to that than I can, if someone can. But I think it's more a matter of the CPS Oversight Committee, I think it really comes down to the members that we have. So sometimes they may refer to Michelle's group at CPS, or defer to them on what decisions need to be made, or what issues that we should be addressing. So I don't think that they're feeling overwhelmed. I think we just have a small number of members who are currently participating on that committee. And really, again, getting those engaged members, finding members who are well-versed in what CPS does, and putting them on that subcommittee would be key to really making that committee take off and thrive.
What sort of staff...do you have a half FTE staff support now?
Yes.
You do? So you're asking for additional half FTE? Is that what the request was?
Not necessarily additional FTE, but more members in the community to serve on that subcommittee who are well-versed and maybe even have experience with how CPS operates, even knowledge of the CDRT team.
Okay. I would concur with Supervisor Peters. I think, you know, meeting with our staff around this and maybe even with some response to the...I mean, we had the work and kind of the work plan, but I think there are some other things embodied in here, and I know, Nav, you and I have at least talked on a couple of occasions about some of the things, and so I would suggest we might, as we talked about earlier today, some of the report backs after we get some further review of it, to have some reflection and maybe some recommendations come back to this board as it relates to membership is one thing, but I think also the work and support the work that the coalition and our other committees do. Okay. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I had a question about the history of looking to other governing bodies for assistance, especially when it comes to recruitment of your board. Tell me about the history, working, reaching out or working with First Five, for instance.
I'm not really familiar with working with First Five. I'm not sure if...I'm not sure if Ernie, we can speak to that. Ernie Brown, who...
Well, my point, it's kind of rhetorical. My point is that that might be a good opportunity to perhaps give a similar presentation to. Remember, the commissioners that serve on First Five, for the most part, are not elected representatives. And so I think they, you know, whether you would try to garner interest from them themselves to possibly consider serving, as long as there's no conflicts. But I think just kind of getting the word out through other means besides just the Board of Supervisors and using some subject-specific decision-making bodies, and obviously, it should be obvious why First Five would be one of them, since we do focus on early learning and health for children... for children aged zero to five in the county, that might be an avenue to explore.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. No other comments, and thank you so much for you and your fellow Coalition members being here today, for your work, for the energy and effort you put into it and for preparation of report, and I trust we'll be hearing back hopefully on some of the efforts, not only to recruit new members, but also maybe to look at some of the activities and be supportive in any way we can, so.
Yes, we really appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, so I had no one sign up on item 35. Anyone here wish to address item 35? Okay, if not, this is received and filed, and with that, then we will do just that and then move to the next item.
Item 36 is the 2017 Domestic Violence Death Review Team Annual Report.
Okay, who's going to introduce this item? And I know I saw our district attorney was here earlier, there's Paul. And thank you for your patience, and I know that, again, continue to have a full agenda, but Paul, thank you for being back for I don't know how many years now, but anyway.
Actually, I believe this is my 10th year.
10th year.
Yes. This is the 18th presentation of the Domestic Violence Death Review Team Report. I'm pretty sure I've been here for the last 10, so. Thank you, Supervisors, for having us and for your, giving us your time. As I said, this is the 18th presentation of this report. I also wanted to thank publicly the members of our team. I'm not going to go through naming them all, because I know we're limited on time. I did want to, the team really wanted to send a personal thank you and a message of hope to one of our longest members, her name is Jane Kohill. She and her husband escaped with their lives but lost all their personal possessions at home in the recent fires. And we know that she's safe and sound and she's able to live with some family, so she's not homeless, but we just wanted to send out our thoughts and prayers to her publicly.
Okay.
So that's the way I'd like to start.
Okay, thank you for sharing that.
And before I actually get into the actual cases that we reviewed this year, I did want to do something a little different. As you can tell from the report, I wanted to start with a little bit of good news, because there isn't a lot of good news that I usually talk about in the Domestic Violence Death Review Team Report. A number of years ago, we came to this board with the recommendation that this county start a Family Justice Center, and I thank the board members that participated in that first two-day strategic planning session, and I'm happy to report that we have been open for a year now with Phase One of the Family Justice Center and that we are about to open Phase Two, the completion of that. The construction is now supposed to be done in mid-December. We were hoping it would be available for the kickoff event next, this Saturday at Sacramento State. I hope you can all be there, but it won't be. It'll be done a few weeks later, then we'll actually be able to get moving on that in just a few more weeks after construction is completed. And we sent you a number of graphs to try to break down the efforts that the Family Justice Center has done so far, even though it's only been open in a limited capacity. We wrote grants right when, just before we opened, to try to get money for some legal representation. There are so many people that come into the family court that do not have the funds to be able to hire an attorney, and they are trying to get help and trying to become safe, and they're looking for a temporary restraining order, and they're faced with a 50-page form that many lawyers, I actually had brand-new lawyers in my office try to fill the form out, and they were unsuccessful on it. So it's a very daunting first contact with the system, and it makes many victims that right away just say, "I can't do this, I'm just going to quit," and they do not follow through on that restraining order. We wrote that grant and it was accepted. We got three lawyers to do the self-help every hour that the court is open, Monday through Friday. We were hoping to get one or two people a day, so we put in that grant that we would serve 200 people in the first year, and as you can see from the results of our report, we had 1,187 people that we were able to help with civil restraining order self-help form completion. And another real positive of that is the trust that was created between the advocates and the legal team with the victims that did come into that center. We had 800 people come for follow-up services. That includes more legal services and more social work services. One of the goals of the center is to try to inform everyone that comes in about the safety concerns that they are entering into when they create a restraining order, because research has shown the most dangerous time for a victim that's trying to leave a violent relationship is when they first communicate that they want to end that relationship. So safety planning can take a long time before someone is actually ready to communicate safely that they're willing to leave. Sometimes that can be a couple of days, sometimes it can be a couple of months before that communication should be done, based on the safety plans that people put in place and that advocates put in place. So we've been able to reach 2,000 people or have 2,000 clients come in in the first year, and that's with four cubicles, a small space for attorneys to talk to clients, and our Phase Two, which will be, again, thanks to, in many parts, to the CEO's office, the CFO's office, and this board getting us that location, will be able to open up and have a real collaborative center where victims will be able to get many services that they need in one location, and not a new location that they have to go, another place that they have in line, but actually a place where they already go, where they are already going to family court. We can give them all the services they need, save them from having to take four, five, six, eight more trips to different agencies in town, and get them safe and make them feel, instead of that first initial contact where they had where they felt like the system didn't care at all, where they were given a document with no help, they're actually being supported and Sacramento County actually cares about their welfare. So that is some positive news. When it comes to the actual workings of the Domestic Violence Death Review Team, we reviewed nine cases this year, the team did. There's one difference this year as compared to other years, and every other year, every case has been an actual homicide. This year, they had two cases presented that were attempted homicides that had so many repeat issues that the team felt that they were obligated to review those cases, and those cases were reviewed by the team. And if you're looking at your charts, the two cases that were attempted murders were number five and number seven in the charts that you have in the report, in case that was not clear in the report itself. Two of the cases, one of the cases in this, of the nine that were reviewed, took a real toll on my domestic violence unit in our district attorney's office, because a number of our employees had a very close relationship with the victim. In two of the cases out of the nine, the defendants were actually involved in the criminal justice system at or around the time of the murder. In the case that really impacted our unit, he was actually, had pled no contest or guilty to the crime of stalking, he had bailed out and was waiting sentencing. The day he was supposed to be sentenced, he actually instead drove in the early morning to the victim's house, and when she opened her garage door, he confronted her with a gun and killed her. It was a gun that he had stolen from her in a burglary just a few weeks before. And that case and also another case where a murderer had actually been arrested for putting a gun to the victim's head in Placer County, and he actually bailed out at a very high bail in Placer County, and then three days later finished the job killing her in Sacramento County. Those cases have, it took a real toll on the people, the advocates that were working with those victims, the DAs, the prosecutors that were having daily communications with the victim. And when we looked at all of the cases together, again, we see all of the lethality factors in every single case that we reviewed, that if they were brought to a court, to a judge who had control over whether somebody was let back out in the community or whether they should stay in custody because they're too much, they posed too much of a danger, if they were, if we had judicial officers that were trained on the newest aspects of lethality and strangulation, if we had our prosecutor team were able to communicate that to the judges, if we had law enforcement officers that were trained to look for it at the initial contact with the victim and put it in their police report, then we would be able to communicate to the court why these people who have all these lethality factors really are a danger to the community, and instead of maybe a slightly higher bail from $50,000 to $200,000, which is with one of the cases, this person really needs to have no bail and needs to remain in custody. What we have done before we made this presentation to this, to the board here today, is we wanted to make sure that if we proposed this, that we could actually implement it. So we went to law enforcement, the law enforcement management in our community, our district attorney, Anne Marie Schubert, has a monthly meeting with all the law enforcement management for every police chief and the sheriff in our community. And we proposed that we put this lethality assessment into action with every law enforcement community in Sacramento, and we were met with over, just absolute enthusiasm. Everyone was, thinks it's a fantastic idea. There is a 11-point validated program, validated question-answer that law enforcement can give to a victim right at a crime scene, right when she or he has just been abused, and that assessment, that law enforcement can easily be trained on how to use that, those 11 questions, make an assessment right there and make a determination, is this person a high risk for an upcoming lethality event with this abuser? If, in another state, Maryland, what they do and what we are proposing to implement here is to, if that person rates as being high risk in the assessment, that law enforcement immediately calls one of the 24-hour hotlines that we have available in this county. We've has a hotline with trained advocates, My Sister's House, the Community for Peace. The Community for Peace actually has a team that will roll out. So in Citrus Heights, we have the Best of All Worlds going on. But if that's not available, we can have somebody on the 24-hour hotline and actually make contact with that victim and explain to them what the lethality factors are, what the danger is involved, and start a safety plan right there to make sure that they are working with the concept and knowledge that they need to be able to make themselves and their family and children safe. When we look at that program, if we're going to do that, we need to have law enforcement then document that. So what law enforcement does now, when they go out and they talk to a victim, they talk to a victim, they take a statement, they finish their investigation, they book any evidence they have, and they submit their report. What we're asking them to do is take one extra step, do this assessment, this 11-question assessment, and then document that in their police report, that you asked the questions, what the answers to the questions were, and then what the assessment was and what steps that you took as far as if you called on the hot, for a hotline advocate or not.
So Paul, are you recommending then the review team, and I assume through District Attorney Schubert, that this be implemented immediately, or does this take time to roll out? And you're describing how it works and how, you know, how it would be implemented, but so, how is this, can this be done under the authority of the district attorney? Does it require this board to give some direction regarding that or what?
It really doesn't require the board to give much direction. What we've done is we've kind of gotten the district attorney, Anne Marie Schubert, to talk to law enforcement. It really requires the chiefs of the law enforcement agencies to say, "Yes, we're going to implement this." And it will require some training. So I'm not sure if it's going to take six months for the training of all the law enforcement officers, but that's the only question that we don't have answered right now, is how long it's going to take to get the training done.
But to your point about the cases you were describing earlier, then there's at least some reason to believe that in maybe one of those cases, if not both of them, that had that lethality assessment been done, there might have been, folks might not have been released on bail, at least on a lower bail, is that right?
Yes, yes.
And so then you might have had a victim alive versus one who was killed, obviously, as you reviewed these cases, so.
Yes. And even in the cases where that may not have happened, where we might have kept somebody in custody, we still would have had victims that would have been informed about the lethality factors and about safety planning, and two or three of these cases, this incident happened just as the lethality factors have proven, right when the communication happens that "I want to leave the relationship" is when the argument starts that leads to the ultimate act of lethality. And if victims are trained as to how to approach that conversation and know that you should have a safety plan in place before you do it, and not necessarily a one-on-one conversation where you're alone and there's a weapon handy for the perpetrator, those simple steps, you know, do it in a phone call, do it in a public place where that person is unarmed and you have support systems around you, there are all sorts of ways that you can make yourself safe when you're deciding and make that communication. So that kind of knowledge in and of itself, if you got on a call to an advocate on the hotline, may also be able to save someone's life. The third part of this is the part that none of us have control over, but we're going to propose it to the presiding judge of the Superior Court. We believe that judges also need to be trained on lethality factors. I know that there are a number of programs that are now training judges in other states on strangulation and lethality factors and how they impact personal safety and community safety, and I think that this would be something that would be advantageous for any of the judges that are involved in the Domestic Violence Court or the Family Relations Court, and really any of the judges, all of the judges, because they often are on the night call and have to make decisions about criminal protective orders when domestic violence calls come. The current presiding judge is ending his two-year stint, and our next judge is going to be starting in January, so as soon as he is in place, we're going to propose this to the presiding judge.
All right.
And those are really are the bulk of our recommendations for this year. I don't know if anyone had any questions or...
Okay.
We tried to, I tried to anticipate from, you know, questions from years past and break down some graphs to make it easy for everyone to know where these are occurring, how it's being impacted.
No, very thorough. Thanks, Paul. Do you have a couple of questions, comments? Supervisor Frost?
I have a question relating to page nine. It's talking about the zip codes of clients in other cities outside of Sacramento City.
Yes.
And in specifically, well, I guess in Citrus Heights, we have a couple of zip codes, and it looks like we're up there, but then if you go down to page 14, we have It seems like we have more murder-suicides in Citrus Heights than anywhere else. Is that a fluke, or is that, are we just having worse problems in Citrus, in those areas?
No, I would not say that Citrus Heights has a problem that is bigger than other places in the community. When we do our cases, we're limited as to when we can review them. We review them when they're murder-suicides, because the police investigation is already completed. And then there are other domestic violence murders that we have to wait until the prosecution of the case is completed. So every once in a while, there will be this, it'll...
Like an anomaly.
Look like this, where one area is more impacted by domestic violence homicides than another. But I can tell you that that is not, that is not a long-term...
It seems like it goes up and down. Sometimes we have more deaths in our city and sometimes we have none.
Yes.
So it's year by year, it differs.
Right.
And not all of them are reported, right? I mean, not all of them are domestic, this is just the one domestic violence that you know about?
Right, well, the cases that we look at are the domestic violence homicides, and we always find out about the homicides. Every once in a while, somebody can try to hide a body after a murder, but it's very rare that we don't find out about a homicide, because that person will end up being missing and somebody will make a complaint. But the domestic violence, the number of domestic violence incidents is sometimes a misleading number, because to be able to get a number for domestic violence, you have to have people make a call. call. You have to have people access services. And I know that, like a Community for Peace out in Citrus Heights does a wonderful job of communicating with victims. And by doing that, they actually increased victim's security to be able to come out and say, I've been a victim. It's kind of like what we've seen going on in the Hollywood tabloids. People are finally feeling comfortable in those situations to say, I can speak out about the abuse that has happened to me, and I'm not going to be ostracized. When you get a protective community like they have in Citrus Heights and the combination of the, a Community for Peace and the Citrus Heights PD, then victims feel more likely that it's okay for them to come out and talk about their abuse and feel that they're going to be supported. So sometimes if you have a higher number of reported domestic violence, it actually means that your system is doing a better job.
I was going to say, we have a lot of resources on that side, but we also have resources on this side, too. My Sister's House and others, so.
Yes. And Weave does a fantastic job, too.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts or comments? I just had one quick observation, not unlike other reports we've seen, Paul, but this year on eight out of nine cases, you had drugs or alcohol as a factor. And again, I think this screams out once again to, I think, the substance abuse and the role that plays, obviously, in the dynamics of some very tragic, tragic cases that you folks, you know, reviewed. And I think, again, it's just another challenge for this community, continue to try and provide, you know, services should people wish to avail themselves of it for those abuses.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. Well, having, again, this is receiving file. I want to thank you for sharing the good news on the Family Justice Center. Again, that's been in the works. And I know, obviously, members of this board and general community, and certainly led by former District Attorney John Scully, and many others, and a real labor to get it to where it's at. And Phase Two coming up pretty shortly, that's, that's, that's good news and all of today. And I think to work with, informing folks of some issues of danger as it relates to domestic violence and, you know, potential victims and victims, I think it's a good approach. So you'll keep us posted on that, so.
Okay, will do.
All right. Nothing else? Have anybody signed up on item 36? So with that, we'll receive and file. Thank you, Paul, for your patience today from waiting for this afternoon. Okay, with that, Madam Clerk, we'll move to next item.
Item 38 is the Mather Revenue and Expenditure Workshop.
Item 37, please.
Oh, I'm, sorry about that. Update on full-service...
The folks in the front row, they were all excited. They were interested in 38, but not yet.
Update on full-service rehousing shelter siting options.
Okay, Ms. Edwards.
Good afternoon, Chair Natale and members of the board. I'm happy to be here to talk about the siting options for the housing, the shelter, rehousing shelter. You approved this shelter in the June budget hearings, and our goal at that time was to find a site that could house 75 homeless individuals, that would accommodate pets, partners, and possessions. In preparation, DHA staff had several meetings with community groups.
Anne, just a second. I don't know what's going on over here, but you're too loud. We can't hear the speaker. Hello? Thank you.
We had several meetings with community groups, including local shelter providers, the Sacramento Region Coalition to End Homelessness. And each group shared their perspective on siting considerations to best meet the needs of shelter guests, including low barrier entry, proficient shelter operations, and optimized service connections. Insights were offered on the importance of a strong peer support structure, securing and storing belongings, and ensuring strong health outcomes with medication management and follow-up on health and behavioral health appointments. So we began by searching for a single site that offered dormitory-style quarters for 75, up to 75 people. County representatives from real estate, general services, planning, and DHA actively researched and assessed potential sites throughout the county using the following criteria: compliance with shelter zoning provisions, the size of the parcel or a building so that it could accommodate a 75-bed shelter, access to transportation or services, and neighborhood compatibility. Since June, staff have assessed approximately 50 sites countywide, including county-owned facilities, private vacant lots, and buildings. The common challenges with many of the sites include site appropriateness, the significantly higher costs associated with using a non-county-owned facility, and the project timelines needed to get a site up and operational. Given these challenges, we are recommending an interim approach using a scattered-site rental housing model. This provides a more immediate solution to sheltering persons targeted for the full-service rehousing shelter. Moving forward with this approach will allow us to continue to assess shelter sites with your guidance and preferred areas and funding parameters. Additional resources will be needed if a county-owned facility is not used. This interim scattered-site model will serve the same number of people with the same level of service as a single site. The scattered-site interim housing concept can best be described as a third-party provider holding the lease on a private home and outfitting it to accommodate guests for short-term stays. The homes can accommodate up to five guests per night per location, and the house is supported by a live-in monitor. Careful measures are taken to ensure neighborhood compatibility, and the provider establishes a communication channel with neighbors. House rules are in place to prohibit loitering in front of the residents and other potentially troubling behaviors that could disturb the neighbors. Once the guests are placed in the home, case managers offer ongoing support on-site with frequent visits. They arrange transportation for appointments so that they can access all the services that they need. Rehousing support for the guests begins immediately upon entry so that we can connect them to stable income, public benefits, and permanent housing. Partners, pets, and possessions will be welcomed along with individuals with varying degrees of behavioral health concerns. The advantages to this model is that it's a proven model in Sacramento County, used by self-help housing for both interim and permanent housing. This approach has low upfront costs and a quick startup timeline. This also offers more options to engage groups that are sometimes unwilling to go into a large, single shelter, such as youth, women, veterans, individuals in the LGBTQ population. Sometimes those folks want to stay in their own communities. And that's true for a lot of the homeless population in general, is if they're homeless in, say, Citrus Heights or Arden Arcade or Carmichael, they want to stay in that community. It also does not overly concentrate this population in any one given neighborhood. This model certainly requires more coordination efforts by all, but the advantages outweigh this disadvantage. So to ensure that we can shelter homeless individuals timely with the approaching winter months, I am asking today for the authority to pursue this interim scattered-site option. We will then release an RFP quickly in order to get services implemented as soon as possible. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thanks, Anne. We know we don't have anyone sign up to speak on this, so Supervisor Kennedy.
So we're talking how many homes, 60?
We're talking about 10 to 15 homes for
For how many people?
About five people each.
For 10 to 15 houses of five people each. How many people were we talking about?
How many, pardon me?
How many people were we talking about citing?
Seventy-five. We're really targeting the same population that we were in the single site. Seventy-five people...
So we're looking at seven to eight people in each home?
Five.
Supervisor...
That's not working for me.
Supervisor, that would, this is Paul, like, that would be, we're looking at 15 houses at five apiece, that would be the 75.
Okay, 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 I got it. And is it okay if I ask a member of the audience to come in?
Sure, yes, you can.
John, would you mind coming to the podium?
Stand by, Anne.
Ask you a question.
Mr. Foley.
Didn't we have to fill out the speaker slip, John? You got called on.
Apologize for putting you on the spot.
John Foley, Executive Director of Sacramento Self-Help Housing.
Yeah, I'm sorry for putting you on the spot, John, but, you know, you and I have worked on this type of project for a very long time in the past, and it's, it's not easy. I remember when I was serving on your board, it was very difficult to find homes.
Yes.
What, what do you think the challenges are going to be to locate 15 homes?
We have two different kinds of houses that we do. We have permanent supportive housing, where each person has their own bedroom, and we like to get six-bedroom houses for that. There are not a lot of six-bedroom houses.
Right, there are many.
That's been challenging. We contract with Hutt for that through Sacramento Steps Forward, and our contracts, if you average it out, we should be opening one house a month. And we really stalled out several months ago, and we just couldn't find any. And so we've transferred one of our staff people, so she works half-time, just talking with realtors, just talking with property managers, very aggressive. Well, Patty Eplinger, I mean, you know Patty. And she's been very effective. So we are doing fine with that now. The other kind of housing we do, where people can share bedrooms, because they're just there on a short period of time, like the program we have with WellSpace, or the one we did with the city with Common Sense, which this program sounds like is very similar, where it could be two people per bedroom, we can manage four-bedroom houses. There are a lot more four-bedroom houses than there are six-bedroom houses. So Patty commented earlier today to me, actually, gee, I'll be, you know, I'll make people happy, because frequently when I'm talking to groups, someone will come up and say, can't you use a four-bedroom house? I've got a four-bedroom house. And for the other program, we really can't. So we think we can do this. I mean, six months is what they put in the report. That's going to be challenging, but I think it's probably doable.
Okay. And in your experience with this approach, there really hasn't been a whole lot of neighborhood pushback, has there?
No, we, I mean, when we move into a house, of course, we put a sign up right away on the, on the house that says, here's our phone number, here's our name, call us if there's anything comes up. And when we move in, we talk, well, the same thing you would do if you moved to a different house. You know, you're out mowing the lawn, you talk to your neighbor that comes by. You go next door, maybe you don't borrow a cup of sugar anymore, but there's always something you need to do. And so we are in communication with our neighbors right away, both our staff who live in the house, you know, our house leader, as well as our case management staff. And then if something comes up, they know who to call right away so we can get involved. Yeah.
Okay, thanks, John.
Yeah, sure, thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Supervisor Peters and Supervisor Serna.
Before you go away...
Yeah, John?
So, do you conduct neighborhood meetings to discuss compatibility? So the neighbors know that you're there in advance and, you know, give them your phone number and those kinds of things?
For us, neighborhood compatibility is, is thinking about, you know, the kind of neighborhood into which I'm going to have somebody move. So I try to avoid areas that are heavily drug-infested. I try to make sure that there's good public transportation, that, you know, they can walk to shopping pretty easily, that kind of thing, and that our folks will kind of, you know, be comfortable there. But usually, we don't have, you know, those kind of neighborhood meetings until we've actually gotten to the house so that people can actually see what we're doing. I mean, part of what we like to do is invite them in, and until we secure the house, we can't do that. So we try and do a meet-and-greet once we're there.
So the inside of the house, what is, what, if you're having two people per bedroom, what is that, do you put a, you know, a half-wall down the center or a barrier of some kind for people sharing a bedroom?
No.
No? They just share a bedroom?
Yeah.
Yeah. And...
Which I found doesn't work if I want them to live there as a permanent housing situation.
Yeah.
People really want their privacy if they're going to be there long-term. But the idea with, like, our contract with WellSpace, for example, is six weeks. That's how long people stay. People are just fine. I mean, when the alternative is being on the street, particularly sharing a bedroom for six weeks, they wouldn't be if they're going to be there for three years, you know? So, yeah, that's a good question.
Do you have, what does the management of each individual building look like? Is there someone there 24 hours a day?
Yes, we have a part-time staff person that lives at each house.
And will that be what happens for this new proposal? So there's a, getting nodding heads. So Paul?
Yes, Supervisor, that would be the intent for this contract.
So there's someone there as kind of the manager of the facility, and then specialists come and go as needed?
That's true. The person who lives there, their main job, well, I mean, in some ways, their main job is to be a role model, because they're usually formerly homeless folks. But their secondary job is to call us, you know, 24 hours a day if anything is going wrong and we need to get a regular line staff person there, or to, you know, sometimes they can just take care of it themselves, of course. But, no, we want someone living in the house that's going to be responsible.
Do you, when you intake the people, do you get people with similar problems? Like, do you house drug addicts together versus people who've got other kinds of problems? Or how?
One advantage we have when we have enough, like, like that Common Sense program that we did for a couple of years, we had five houses. So we had a chance to try and get people who, like, if we have people that are trying to stay sober, we aren't going to move, if we can help it, a person into that house who is actively drinking.
Okay.
So we try and, as best we can, if, I mean, I don't know who's going to get the contract, hopefully it's me, but maybe somebody else. But with 15 houses, there'd be a good opportunity to mix people up, whether it would be young people, you know, I mean, transition-age youth aren't necessarily a good fit with, with some of the older homeless folks. So sometimes it's better to do an age thing, too.
So what Anne described earlier about young people as a category, women as a category, LGBT?
We certainly have had women who could not live in a mixed-gender house, and we had to have an all-woman house for them, yeah.
So you do do something about that?
In fact, that's part of what we do at the intake, is really explain the situation so that people know what they're getting into, and, and they can explain what aspect of it is going to work or isn't going to work. I mean, maybe they need to be in a certain neighborhood because of things going on in their life, or maybe they, you know, can't live, you know, be in a house with men, or can't be in a house with women, or, you know, whatever it is, yeah.
Okay. One of the things, maybe this is an Anne question rather than you, sorry, you, I want to ask you about...
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Kind of what happened here in June, we were talking about, you know, a, a single facility. And then because of the problems stated in the staff report, you're going towards multiple. But it also talks about the finances are better this way, if I understood the staff report correctly.
Well, if we went, it's, it's very complicated depending upon which option you choose. This is very cost-effective. That is very true. And if we were to use a single site that was a county-owned site, that would be cost-effective as well. But if you start looking at leasing, a building that's available for lease, or purchasing property and either building a building, or bringing on modular buildings, that becomes very, very pricey, and then really takes some time to implement. So this is both cost-efficient, and it's something that we can implement quickly. And there are some significant advantages to this model as well.
I can see the implementation quickly. I did wonder, when we were first looking at this, how we were going to buy a building and outfit it and all that kind of thing. So my primary concern is compatibility with the neighborhoods. I understand what he said about, you know, you wait till you choose a home, and then you tell, you know, the people in the neighborhood. For group homes, there's a rule about a maximum number of people. Is it six?
Yes.
Yes.
And we wouldn't be putting more than six people
Right, okay.
in a home. And I think that it's, it is a legitimate concern, and it's something that Mr. Foley and his organization has done really well. Again, don't know who the contractor will be, but they do have a long experience of being really good neighbors.
Well, that's, that's really, my concern is being really good neighbors. I certainly, over the time I've been here, had many complaints about group homes and the, and the loitering that goes on, and the noise. And I, I imagine that the manager can do a pretty good job of keeping from loitering in front, but, I mean, people have to go outside. So what, I mean, if they're in the backyard...
And there are, there are behavioral norms and rules, just like there are with any tenant or even someone who resides in a shelter. So, you know, you, they can't be carousing loud parties in the backyard till all hours of the night, just like I couldn't if I was a renter in a neighborhood without somebody complaining. There's a, the onsite staff person 24/7 is a big advantage. And then they also have a number to call. There's, you know, an organization behind the manager that's on-site that has a cadre of staff to come in if, if there's a problem that needs to be addressed immediately. I'm going to have my staff standing by. I mean, we've got several staff assigned to this project that will be able to address issues quickly as they arise as well.
And Supervisor...
I understand your concern completely, and we're going to do everything.
What is our ability as the county to shut a building down if it's a problem? If, you know, you just got the wrong combination of people in there and the neighborhood is unhappy?
Since we will be holding the contract with whatever vendor is selected, we would make those decisions together, and we would have every right, as the person paying the bills, to say, we don't want you to use... bills, to say, we don't want you to use.
Okay. So we have every ability to say, we don't want you to use that. Does that mean a legal action, and we have to write them a letter that says, this home is off the market? And how fast does that happen?
Well, and it gets complicated because of a lease. It depends on how long a lease that they have, and what other uses they might be able to use that property for. So I don't know that we would have the authority, any legal, I don't know, I'm going to look to Robyn to assist me with this one. I don't know, we'd have any legal authority, but we work in close partnership with our contractors, and we would work together to solve whatever it was that needed to be solved.
Well, I'm thinking more, you know, my experience is more where you have to call the sheriff's department, because there's a lot of loud parties at a house, and that kind of thing. And it, you know, it's not high on the priority list, they may or may not get there. And I, this is, you know, this is a different group, and it could cause the neighborhood great angst. And I, that's why I want to know more about how fast.
Yeah, I think John would be better.
How nimble.
There's a question for me, after all.
[laughing].
This has never happened in our experience. We've done this for a long time. But should it happen that a house was out of control, we would shut it down. I mean, we can't function that. We were certainly not helping anybody. So we would just move everybody out of the house.
Which legally would be separate from the lease arrangement, the contract?
I understand, yeah.
Right. Yeah, so I'd still be stuck paying the rent, but we would just have to move the people out.
So you're paying the rent. Typically, how long is this lease? Is it a year? Five years?
I.
Probably the term of your contract, huh? If you were to get it, whoever gets it.
Yeah. Should we have this contract, I would imagine we would start out with a one-year lease, that'd be pretty normal, and then renew it at the end of the year.
Supervisor, if I may also add, as we go through the procurement process for this, one of our requirements is going to be experience in managing these types of properties, and demonstrated experience that they either don't have, haven't had historical problems of this kind, or that they've, they can adequately and have adequately managed it. And we'll make sure that within the protocols of the contract and working with them, that there are a lot of layers of dealing with these problems, including involving county staff, to make sure that we're holding the contractor to certain standards.
Okay. So it sounds like what you're saying is if there's a disturbance of some kind, that probably, you know, we're talking about a couple of hours maximum to get people onsite to help quell a disturbance, if that's the right terminology?
Can you give me the timeframe? How quickly they can get there?
I know you said it hadn't happened, so.
Well, I've had disturbances. I mean, we're dealing with people. So when something happens, and the house leader calls up our staff person at 2:00 in the morning and said, this has happened, you know, this tenant's boyfriend has now come to the house and is causing a problem, he, the house leader then calls the police, and our staff person rushes over, and we get it straightened out.
Okay.
I mean, it's, you know.
Will the sheriff's department, or the city PD, wherever, you know, wherever these are located, will they be aware of which houses these are?
Well, one reason to put the sign on the house is so that the officers, as they arrive, will see what it is. I guess my hope would be in working, since this will be your, whoever does this would probably work with you to work with the sheriff, to make sure they understood what was going on at each house. It's my understanding that's actually who's going to determine who's moving in. It'll be the outreach team, and the sheriff's department is going to identify the homeless folks and bring them in. So there'd be a pretty close relationship, I think, with law enforcement.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Next, Supervisor Serna and Supervisor Frost.
Thank you. Still have a number of questions. Forgive me if you already addressed them in your presentation, I had to step out for a moment. But are we just talking, Ann, about the unincorporated area?
No.
No.
County-wide.
Okay. Ann, is there any assumption at this point about kind of the distribution between the number of these homes in the seven cities versus the unincorporated area?
We haven't got to that level of detail. We really, it's around availability of homes, and we certainly want them spread throughout the community, so that there is access in neighborhoods. But we have not dictated where, because that could be problematic based on availability.
Supervisor Serna, one item that I think we need to clarify, I was waiting for you to come back, is Paul has a clarification that you asked me about the River District. I want to make sure that's in the record.
Yeah, and we'll get to that.
Oh, you want me to wait? Okay.
Yeah, we'll get to that. So, but in terms of the distribution, I would assume then that, because it's going to be county-wide, and it's going to include potential sites and incorporated areas, that we would work very closely with the various city administrations, so that we have an understanding of where these locations would be relative to other, either future or potential, similar service sites. For instance, the city of Sacramento is looking at, I think, at least a couple of different low-barrier triage centers, if you will, of their own, using a different model, a model that would have a larger aggregation of folks at the site, so, with its own impact. So I think we have to make sure we're coordinating hand-in-glove with the city folks.
Yes.
And then, part of the question was answered in response to a question that Supervisor Peters asked, but I want a little more detail, I'm not sure who the right person is, but, so give me an understanding of how AOD services would be administered, for example.
So both mental health services and drug and alcohol services will be accessed through the normal way anyone accesses them now. The difference is, there's going to be a case manager to help them navigate those systems and get to those systems. There's not going to be an onsite mental health counselor or substance abuse counselor at the house. There will be onsite case management services at the house, and transportation to other appointments as needed.
What's the frequency of kind of direct access, do you think, to these service touches?
It really depends upon the individual. Some people may need very regular, multiple times a week contact, and others may need less. It just depends upon the severity of their impairment.
And I assume that these units would have strict restrictions on possession and consumption of alcohol and illicit drugs onsite?
Illicit drugs, for sure. Again, these are individual residents in a home that, I don't know, John can answer, based in his program, what the rules are. I know illicit drugs are not allowed.
The way we've always done it is, people have house rules, and it includes no weapons, no threats, no violence, no drugs, no alcohol on the property. We do have a couple of permanent supportive housing houses that are wet, where people who come through the SIP program and are not able to not drink, will have a safe place to live and get medical help and other things. But other than that, we don't allow alcohol directly at the houses. People can drink, but just not, you know, not there.
Okay. Question for Ann, is there any advantage that staff has concluded comes with citing these various full-service sites near our DHA bureaus?
That certainly is a consideration, and that might.
And walking distance within?
Yes. I mean, that's, again, it's going to, we're going to go out to a procurement process to select a vendor, and then we're going to work closely with the vendor on selecting sites.
But we do have some control ahead of time.
Of course.
By kind of giving the parameters.
The parameters.
That we give to the vendor population to say, this is kind of what we're thinking, right? So that could be something that we.
Yes, that could be something that.
Develop early.
Yes.
So I'd encourage us to think carefully about that, because we're already making statements about how our DHA bureaus, I believe, are going to function differently per some of our other initiatives that we adopted earlier this year, where if someone needs access to services, they're going to have a more immediate ability to acquire them if they go to a DHA bureau.
Yes.
Okay. And then, same thing with public transit. I assume that when we go out looking for a contractor to manage this, that we would have something to say about the import of locating these sites near public transit?
Yes, that's critical.
Okay. And then finally, what happens if you have five people, four of them have a single dog, and the fifth has two dogs?
Well, I think, as John stated earlier, that one of the advantages of hopefully having 15 homes is that you can try and balance that in the way in which you place people, and that would be another consideration, as well as gender and other sort of compatibility issues.
Okay.
Because dog compatibility is also an issue.
So, yeah, so it sounds like that might be one of the criteria for how you group folks, is by pet ownership status, I guess?
It certainly will be a compatibility consideration, yes.
Okay. What's our, I'm looking to Rob Leonard, what's our restriction on number of animals per home, per square foot of lot? I don't know what the metric is.
It would be four, four animals.
Four animals.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, one of the things I know that we've been very consistent about is that this is also about securing possessions. I assume there's a way to do that, even if someone comes with a lot of possessions, and it might be, you know, fairly disorganized, might be in the form of a shopping cart, or a couple of shopping carts full of stuff, that that can be, if it's going to be stored outside, it's stored outside neatly, somehow shielded, it's not going to be some visual light to surrounding neighbors?
That is true, and I think garages are going to be, I mean, homes with garages will be the best way to store some of those belongings.
Okay. And then, what are we thinking in terms of when we would know whether or not the model's working? Six months?
I would say it's going to take us six months to get up to full speed, fully operational, and then within the year, we would have a really good idea. I mean, we'll have a sense in six months about how it's going. And then after the full year, we'll have a much better idea.
Okay. And then, maybe this is a question for John. What, in your experience, have you seen in terms of the ability to serve some of the most challenging cases? So those folks that are literally, you know, high on meth, that are currently living under a bridge or on the parkway, are those the candidates we're talking about that would be eligible to live in an environment like this?
Well, you'll be determining, I think, who you would be referring for this program. And I think your idea was that the sheriff's department and others would be identifying people that they've encountered. And I assume that would include some folks that meet that description, although an awful lot of the people we encounter have more physical disabilities, maybe mental health disabilities, some combination of that. And it's certainly true, if someone continues to be a heavy user of meth, they're very challenging to figure out where they could be permanently housed and have it be stable. But many of these people need really permanent kind of services, and that'd be part of, I think, what your program is intending to provide, is ongoing services. And so hopefully, the program could be linking up appropriate housing location with heavy, perhaps really heavy service provision.
Yeah, I would hope so, because we've made some overtures this year about the connection between some of the other initiatives we've pursued, namely that of the parkway. And the fact that we're looking at the full, what was then considered a single-site, or perhaps two sites, to satisfy this intent to bring a full-service shelter to Sacramento County as a means to add capacity. So not all, but some of the folks that we might encounter, that our ranger patrol might encounter on the parkway, would have that presented as an opportunity for shelter.
Yes. I mean, our, the way we do it, and if we're your vendor, we would do it that way, the intention is to basically not say no to anybody who, but we would take time to explain what they're getting into, and some people might say no to us.
Understood.
Because we do have house rules and everything. But when we move people in, then we would do everything we could for as long as they're at the house, to be able to keep them to stay there, and be able to help them in whatever needs to happen to move towards moving into a permanent housing, you know, situation. And I think that's the full intent of your staff, and we certainly support that.
Oops. Thank you, John. If I can add, the outreach component, we're going to be working really closely with the sheriff's team and the parkway team, to really identify folks on the parkway, as well as DHA social work staff. So those are going to be the primary outreach targeting for the population for this program.
Okay, great. That's good to hear. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Supervisor Frost?
So a lot of my questions were answered throughout that, but I did have a couple more. And one related to low barrier. The 75 unit was supposed to be a low-barrier meeting, anybody could come under any conditions. So what you're saying is, you'll interview people as they go, as they interview into these homes, maybe someone who's, has violent propensity, propensity for violence, or you might put alcohol and drugs in one home, and then the services come to that home, or group meetings at that home. Is that what you're saying? It's kind of organized in that way? Women in one house, or, you know, specific to gender and issues?
So there will be, yes, there will be a lot of compatibility issues that will be taken into consideration with both the county and the provider that's selected. And the makeup of the population in the houses is going to shift, because the goal is to rapidly rehouse folks out of these shelter beds into permanent housing. So it doesn't mean that there will always be an all-women home, but there might be at a given time. And certainly, we're not going to put a whole bunch of violent people together. So all of the things that John talked about in terms of compatibility will be taken into consideration before putting someone in a home.
But when we were initially talking about this 75-bed facility, in my mind, I was thinking this was the low-barrier, these are the ones who are most likely to use the emergency room, who have been out there a long time. Is that correct?
So it is, yes. It is yes and no. It is a low-barrier shelter. These people have not necessarily been high utilizers of the emergency room. A lot of the folks on the parkway are very, sort of deeply ingrained into the parkway. They don't necessarily use emergency room services. But they get a lot of attention from the sheriff and from the regional parks rangers. So that we are going to serve the hard-to-serve, the low-barrier population in this model, as we were going to in the single-site model.
This will be kind of reserved for those the hardest cases?
Yes, absolutely.
And will these locations be anonymous? So like, say they have drug dealers that want to find them, or someone they owe money to? Is this an anonymous location?
It's not anonymous in the same way that a domestic violence shelter might be anonymous, because the homeless individuals that will be residing there are going to have family and friends that may want to visit them. So it's not anonymous in that way. But it is, again, monitored by the house manager, the backup staff that are available should there be a problem.
And Mr. Foley was talking about the folks who would be staying in the homes would be part-time onsite, but 24 hours. 24 hours a day doesn't sound like part-time. So are they paid part-time? And then my next question is, is this, are these county employees, or are they employees of whoever we contract to manage these homes? And in which case, would make a big difference in liability and cost and the whole bit?
Yes, they will not be county employees. They will be employees of the organization that we contract with. So just assume that it's someone like John Foley's organization, they would be his employees.
It's all included in the contract cost?
Yes.
And is that considered like a job training? Will there be job training in these facilities? And are the, is that actually a job opportunity for people who are coming out of homelessness? Is that how you're training these people? You said some of, many of them have been homeless, so is that part of a job training? So is that part of a job training program?
The programs that we run, where we have houses that are like this, mostly, most of the folks that are serving as house leaders have experienced homelessness themselves, yes. Some of them have been at Mather Community Campus, some of them have been through Women's Empowerment, a number of programs that have gotten them. Some of them have part-time employment. Particularly in our permanent supportive housing programs, often the house leader doesn't have a lot to do, because the people have been there for a few years already, they're pretty stable, you know, things are pretty good. In the houses we're talking about here, not so much. And so those folks often have work to do, because they have to move a new person in, they're assisting someone to move on, and dealing with, you know, the anxieties of this person who's just moved in and just encountering four roommates for the first time, and, you know, that kind of thing. So it's a part-time position, but there are weeks where it's full-time, you know, yeah. But yeah, and a lot of training, and a lot of support, yeah, yeah.
That's it. Thank you, Ann, and John.
Supervisor, if I could, just one clarification, if I had. Paul, can you clarify the River District, as you please?
River District?
Yes, the question's arisen about staging and how we're going to stage this. When we were originally going to have a large facility, we're going to be looking at one or two locations to stage people and get them moved into this. As we're looking at this new scattered site model, probably that staging quote-unquote is going to occur in the field, when we make contact with the people and get them to agree to come to the shelter. There won't be a centralized, we're not anticipating a centralized staging area in any specific neighborhood. The social worker will go out, do the assessment, and make contact with the contractor, and identify a location that will be suitable for that person, and we'll move that person right there. So we're not anticipating at this point, having any kind of centralized staging in the River District or elsewhere. That's what we're contemplating at this point.
Okay, all right. Thanks for the clarification. Next to Supervisor Peters and Supervisor Kennedy.
I have a couple of questions. Obviously mentally ill people, are they going into these homes?
Yes.
Really? Okay. Is there any likelihood of garage conversions that, turning them into bedrooms?
No, we're going to have no more than five residents per home, plus the house manager.
Okay. And then, I don't know whether it's you or Paul, but can someone describe to me, kind of minute by minute, someone comes across a homeless person, an official of some kind, and they say, yes, they would be willing to go somewhere overnight, since we're talking about not having a central place that they could be taken to?
Right.
You call it in the field. Explain to me exactly what happens.
So this is going to be sort of an invite-in versus an outreach-out. So we have Sheriff's deputies and park rangers who see folks on the Parkway all day, every day, and they know who's out there, and they're going to work with us and tell us, hey, the folks in this camp are willing to come. So then we'll send social worker out, someone from the provider out, to assess and figure out where the best place is, and are they in fact willing to come and follow the rules, and then transport them to the place.
So, sorry. So first of all, you just keep referring to the American River Parkway, because there are a lot of homeless camps?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So if the Sheriff's deputy or other official, they have to make a phone call to somewhere where people are waiting to be called on, and they get in their car and go out to wherever it is? I mean, that sounds like hours. I mean, aren't people going to be tied up for?
Well, my social workers are going to be doing a lot of this. So people will be able to call us, and we can then deploy the people to an area. But we're really targeting folks that we already know about, all over the community.
So you probably have a map of some kind that you know where you got a camp of 10 here, or 20 there, or five, and you're, and this, particularly this first year, you're going to go after those camps?
Cindy Kavanaugh, homeless director of homeless initiatives, we've been meeting, we had a meeting today with law enforcement, park rangers, DHA staff, to work up the protocols. We're going to meet regularly. We're actually talking about using a common electronic device as well. So we have a few weeks to work out all the protocols, but I think it's very exciting, because it's new collaboration that I haven't seen. And we will be figuring a lot of this out to make it work for the provider, for DHA staff, for law enforcement. We want to time the decampment with trash pickup and with, you know, facilitating folks entering a home. So there's still a lot to work out, but we are actively in conversation with all the parties.
Sure seemed like a single site would be more efficient.
We still have to do the same outreach. The encampments are all over, or the vulnerable people. So you're still coordinating who should come in, how to stage it. You're still managing vacancies with invites. Initially, it'll be easier, turnover will be slower in a sense. But both the sheriff and Parkway feel, they left today saying, I think this will be easy. And I'm kind of with you, I don't think it will be that easy, but they know the folks, and maybe that's the important, you know, the important part. And we can time it. Time it with their, again, cleanup and their conversations.
Okay, as long as you're there. Then let's go back to this mentally ill, obviously mentally ill being put into these homes. So the next day, well, at some point in time in the next 24 hours, people get services that come to them. So someone who understands what to do with someone who's having mental health issues comes out. They leave them there, they're not going to take them to a mental health facility?
Actually, Ann's probably a better person for this, but only if, I mean, we will be connecting with mental health services unless they're in a crisis situation, we'll be connecting them with services. This would be the same in a central location as in multiple, that's where coordination in multiple locations does become a little bit more challenging, but I'll have Ann speak more.
Yeah, if someone is in a mental health crisis, we're not going to bring them into the home. We're going to take them to the hospital.
Okay.
So someone with a mental health condition is not necessarily ill-suited to go into a home, unless they're in a mental health crisis. And we would not put someone-
I guess that's what I was thinking with crises.
Yes. We're not going to put someone in that's in a mental health crisis. We're going to deal with the crisis first.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, good. Supervisor Frost and Supervisor Kennedy?
I'm still on the mental health. This is one of the things that is needed the most, and I'm always hoping we're not going to miss the opportunity. But at the same time, in my, you know, district, people are sense, in the neighborhoods, people are sensitive to that, and they're sensitive to, you know, siding such homes near a school or whatever, near their children walking to school. So is there sensitivity to those types of things when you're siding these homes? Or do you even, with only five people in the house, do you even run into these issues? Because it's pretty quiet. How do you deal with that?
John could probably better answer that. But again, there is, as you said, there's only five people in the home, and they're supervised, and staff on-call, as well as the house manager. So they're there to-
And they're interviewed before they go into the home. So if there's any concerns, they're not going to go into that home.
So if, for example, if there was a pedophile, we would not place them in a home that had the boundaries of where, near a school or children, et cetera.
Quite a checklist.
That's a, that's an extreme example, but we certainly would not do that.
Do you have anything to add? John?
I think she did great.
Okay.
So there's no requirement to notice this, because it's really under six per home, so as far as zoning and everything?
And yet, I want to reinforce that we'll do outreach to the neighborhood when, before, you know, as we bring people in. John has done an excellent job doing this in neighborhoods. He was just describing to me out in the lobby about opening up a home where there was some neighborhood angst, and they had a barbecue and invited the neighbors. And so it's those kinds of neighborly things that can be done to help with the neighborhood issues.
That's really good, because I think in my district, people would want to know and be included.
Yes.
And you probably ought to have a designated person in your office that we can call when they call us.
Are we going to know as you're siding these homes, the locations?
We'll absolutely let you know, of course.
Before? Is there a public, are you approaching the neighborhood before the home is sited, or after?
After.
Supervisor, the, part of the difficulty would be, they need to secure the house and get the lease in place. And if they wait to do significant outreach to the community to make sure that they're welcome there, they may lose that lease opportunity. So it's kind of a chicken and egg sort of situation.
Sounds familiar.
Yes.
It sounds so familiar. But you'll let us know before, not necessarily before you-
As soon as they sign the lease.
As soon as we know where they're going to be, regardless of where it is in the lease signing process, we will let you know.
Well, then, if there is a problem in that home, after you lease it and you fill it full of people, and the neighborhood has a problem, you will deal with it. You'll remove that person from that house-
Yes.
Immediately.
Yes. We're going to try our very best to manage the situation.
Hopefully, there won't be, but-
Correct.
Okay. Well, that's comforting.
It's as important to us as it is to you, that we are good neighbors, because if we're not good neighbors, we can't use these homes for this purpose. And right now, that is our option. So we are very committed to being good neighbors, so that we can house these homeless individuals that need to get off the streets. And then I also want to reiterate, this is an interim solution. You know, we will continue to look for sites, and then we will assess whether this is a better option, or we want to move to a site. So this is, we can still explore other options. But this, we feel really strongly about this now, so that we can do something.
It seems just from a personal level, a smaller one would be spiritually more healing, but that's just my personal opinion.
All right. Anything else? Not Supervisor Kennedy?
Yeah, I just wanted to make this statement that I probably asked fewer questions than most, and these are all very good and necessary questions. Because of my experience in dealing with this model, I mean, I've been talking to Cindy about, why don't we do more of this? And we kind of accidentally ended up doing it. It does work. I know that there's angst on behalf of the board, there should be. But, you know, my experience with this model has been very successful. That's why I asked the loaded question, the leading question of Mr. Foley, in that have you had many problems in the neighborhoods? Because in my experience, it's been flawless. I mean, as you said, these are human beings, so nothing's perfect. But I'm looking forward to this as an experiment that, should it go well, I think will be a permanent part of our long-term solution.
Okay, thanks. I have not a lot of questions. I think a lot of the things that may have been on our minds were asked respectfully by different members of this board. I would just offer a suggestion, though, that as we move forward, certainly to, you know, keep in mind, obviously, the need to be successful on endeavor different fronts, just as you've outlined, for the people we're trying to serve, for people who, you know, have made their own personal commitments in neighborhoods, and certainly in the community. And again, it's not going to be perfect, trying to make those matches. And, but I do think that, you know, the scattered site approach, and with the proper management and oversight, can be successful on a lot of different counts. And I think it'll be incumbent upon the professionals as we make assessments about how folks are receiving services, and whether it's, you know, appropriate, you know, for the placement for some of the folks who are tougher to serve, and that's what we're looking at. I would just say to the point, I was going to, one question I was going to ask, and you touched on it, that if folks have sex-related offenses, and we know that, we need to be very, very careful. And I'm sure, obviously, whether it's John's program or anybody else, we'll look at that, because I think that probably more so than even the drugs and alcohol or, you know, behaviors might be a bit erratic because of mental illness, will become a immediate concern. And so I think we just need to be careful about how we deal with that in that residential setting, because then that presents different than maybe an institutional setting, where you might be able to get some separations, because just where you physically sided that. So I would just offer that as a, you know, another observation that I'm sure you've given a lot of thought to me on.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I don't have anybody sign up on item 37, so is there any comments by board members? Do you need direction around this? I think you want us to adopt this, then?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Move the item.
Okay. The move is seconded in to prove the staff recommendation with the direction as outlined, and funding's in place. In fact, if we don't spend it pretty soon, you're going to have money left over.
It's only November.
All right, that's right, it's only November. Okay, weather's turning on us, and so let's, nothing else, please vote.
Ms. Peters? Unanimous vote.
Okay. All right. And again, appreciate people's patience. We're going to continue to work down through the items. On item 38, I will call that item. We may have, try to keep this a bit abbreviated. I want to hear from folks in the audience. We've got a couple of incoming bits of information, and I think we can take that into account, and maybe even come back quickly. So, Ms. Peters?
Item 38 is the Mather Revenue and Expenditure Workshop.
Okay. And we're going to make it probably a shorter workshop than we may have anticipated, and I think take board comments, take our audience comments, and we can come back on this. Because I know we have another item where we have audience members that are interested, and then we have off agenda item as well. So we should get to this pretty quickly.
Fair enough. Do you want me to go through the full presentation, or would you-
Well, you had a slide presentation, maybe you can at least touch on some highlights. I don't want to shortcut, because you're bringing board members up to date, and people have had a chance to read that. There's a report out there, you have folks here on some specifics as relates to that. And I think you're, you get some board comments, and maybe some direction out of this today. And we could actually have you come back- Correct. Before the end of the calendar year, and actually with maybe some of the items as well, so.
I think one is towards the end of the calendar year, there's part of it, which is a long-term disposition of property too.
Right, right.
So I want to keep both in play.
So without throwing you too much off base here, Kelter, if you could, you know, get to your presentation, and then we'll take the public comment and get board member questions.
Sure. Fair enough. Troy Givens, with the Department of Economic Development. It's a pleasure to be here. We have, we had scheduled a workshop for Mather. We'll try and abbreviate that according to the schedule you just outlined. Our intent today is to provide the board with an overview of properties the county owns, receive some direction on preference for future property sales, discuss timing and future of property sales, and discuss any projects that may be discretionary, that the board would like to provide direction on. I believe we're going to shortcut that process a little bit, and take board comment, as well as any members from the audience. So with that in mind, we'll talk just a little bit about how we accepted some of these properties. We are now 25 years post-closure from the former airbase. We've spent a great deal of time repositioning the base from a military installation to a general aviation airport, upgrading infrastructure, of course, replacing jobs that were lost with the base closure, and integrating the former base into the community. The properties highlighted here in blue, which we'll discuss at a later date in more depth, were transferred from an economic development conveyance from the federal government in 1997. We have properties here outlined in green that were, properties that were transferred from the federal government in 2013. Each sets of those properties that were highlighted in blue and highlighted here on the screen in green have a 10-year reinvestment requirement from the time of their conveyance from the federal government, where proceeds are required to be spent back at the base for infrastructure and job-generating related activities. As you would note doing the math, the 1997 requirements have expired. The 2013 requirements for these properties that are highlighted on the screen are still in place. So we have a number of properties that we can talk about at a later date regarding their disposition. There are five in the short or near-term property phase. We have one property that is expected to close towards the end of this month, which is a 17-acre piece of property that has about $2.95 million in proceeds that we sold to the Veterans Administration. The properties highlighted here on the screen, and then properties that we will discuss, as you've outlined, at a later date. So with that, I think it might be best to, forward to board comment, and then any public comment as well.
Okay, just briefly- Okay, just briefly, and I want to get to the folks that want to weigh in on this. I know we've received correspondence from the City of Rancho Dova, as well as, I know we have some of our representatives, our veterans organizations.
Yes.
Here. And I would just note that I think it's important that, as we talk about property disposition, because that certainly has a financial component to it, but also has a, you know, a future utilization component. And I think we've been very, I think, thoughtful, working prior to the incorporation of the City of Rancho Dova, but since then as well, about land uses both in the Mather Commerce Center, but certainly on the entirety of the base, the former base property. And as you mentioned, Troy, being 25 years, nearly 25 years post-closure, you know, we're still somewhere along the ways in, you know, in reuse and conversion, and both the economic development conveyance properties, but other properties that came under other conveyances to the county or county entities or other entities, including in Cordova Recreation Park District, received a property at the front for some of the uses there, the Mather Golf Course, the Mather Lake. I mean, there's been a lot of different exchanges of property, including the airport itself. And I guess I would just want to highlight that part of the commitment has been not just from the financial piece of this, but the reinvestment, as well as obviously, long-term uses and their compatibility. And thus, I think, we'll, you know, discussion today, I think, obviously bringing board members up to date, should they not have some of that background detail, and kind of going forward. Because as I raised the issue in budget deliberations earlier this summer, that, you know, when we received the proceeds from that sale, it's been plugged in the general fund, consistent with obviously any conditions that no longer restrict that money. But I think there's still a lot of work to be done, and there's a lot of opportunity out of Mather, and I think we have the ability to partner, as we have in the past, with either private and/or other public entities and concerns and organizations. And I would be hopeful that, because of the late hour today, maybe we don't get into as much detail on that, but that we can come back in a very near term and have some more focus on that, particularly in light of some of the comments that we've received, both in writing and maybe added to. But I think also some of the opportunities still exist. And I guess lastly, I would just say that, as relates to the request by City of Rancho Dova, we'll hear in a moment, but there is, I think, some timeframes that are important that relates to that particular request. And there are obviously others who would like to see us do certain things, and either hold properties off this immediate sale. So I would just say there's some of these that I'm not prepared to go forward, at least this board never isn't, without having further conversations with county staff, with organizations, and the City of Rancho Dova about those opportunities, before we just go off and sell them on the open marketplace, so.
Agreed.
So I don't know if there's any other questions or comments at this juncture, and if not, we can take comments and any feedback from folks. And I know I have three people sign up to speak. And we have Ricky Coricas from our veterans organization, Stephen Heisler of the City of Rancho Dova, and I believe Bert McChesney as well. So Ricky, thank you for your patience, along with others in the room, and appreciate you being here.
Chair and Board of Supervisors, thank you so very much for housing us today, or hearing us today. Hope everybody had a restful Veterans Day. I know I enjoyed some free meals with my wife, so greetings. I'm the Vice Commander of Post 709 of the American Legion. My name is Ricky Coricas. I met with my previous Post Commander, Mike Hughes, and I'm also here with Ben Robinson and Melvin Buzzer, previous Post Commanders of 10-125 of the VFW. We are your newly-elected Young Mather Veterans Memorial Hall Association. We are slowly trying to formalize ourselves, so that we can speak on behalf of all of the veterans organizations in the local community. The mission of the Mather Veterans Memorial Hall Association is to secure a location for veteran organizations to meet, plan, and execute community enhancement projects to serve both veterans, veterans' families, and the local community at large. It's our vision to collaborate with the city, the county, and state governments as we try to secure grants while coordinating fundraisers and seeking private sponsorship. The justification, the veteran service organizations of Rancho Dova and the Mather Field have tirelessly served this community without a place to call home. As of 1 November of 2016, we have served over 130,000 patients at the Sacramento VA Medical Center at Mather through services such as wheelchair ambassadors, concierge services, call reception, personnel visits, and we even have a program designed and aimed to ensuring that no veteran passes away alone. These services are not possible without the thousands of hours from our hundreds of volunteers in our veteran service organizations. Unfortunately, we do not have a central location to collaborate in, to run our meetings, to store materials, maintain a phone number and a mailbox, or even just host a fundraiser to enhance life in this region. It is the position of the Mather Veterans Memorial Hall Association that with a central location, we can better serve our community and help this region take care of the warfighters who have sacrificed so dearly to live in a country free of tyranny. We're currently executing a three-step process to achieve short-term, mid-term, and long-term goals. The first step is preparation paperwork and legalities. Us being a young organization, the Mather Veterans Memorial Hall Association has successfully completed all the requirements from the Internal Revenue Service in obtaining a 501(c)(19) and receiving an EIN number. We have also successfully established a corporation number from the Secretary of State, and we're currently working on our constitution and bylaws. The second step is the goal. In order to get the community focused on a goal of building a veterans memorial hall, we would need to have a physical address for the potential future site that we can focus the community support towards as we come together as a region to build and fundraise. And then finally, step three, the means. Once we have a location, we can begin to modify floor plans and meet specifications, and estimate an overall cost, and set targets for fundraising. Our goals, short, mid, and long-term. Our short-term goals, six months to one year, is to hopefully get a veterans headquarters. This could be something as small or as simple as a room that we can have access to, to plan and organize. This would give us a small central location to set up proper communications. The hope is that it would be large enough to host our meetings and potentially house some of our materials. This could be a vacant room already in existence, either in the public or the private sector. Our midterm goal is hopefully one to three years, to perhaps use a building temporarily while we secure a location. We've observed several locations in the area that are vacant, and perhaps we can house those areas while we wait for a transition to happen. This building could be private, or it could be a public building that we could use while in transition, perhaps a portable on public land. The idea is that it would be large enough to host meetings, set up an office, store materials, and perhaps even host a fundraiser. And then finally, our long-term goal that we're aiming to achieve between three and five years is to establish a permanent building dedicated purely for our veterans, where an entire veteran community can come together and work towards community enhancement. We would want this space to be large enough to host large meetings, fundraisers, and provide office space, and have storage for essential materials. In closing, the veterans, the Mather Veterans Memorial Hall Association is committed to this community and to this project. It is our dream and our ambition to ensure that every veteran and family member not only have a place to gather as a community, but that these gatherings provide us with an opportunity to serve here, at home, yet again. I'll take any questions if you have any.
Any questions? No, I don't think so. Thank you, Ricky, for summing that up. And again, it's certainly appropriate you be here today to, you know, I think, outline, you know, some of the work that you're doing as an organization, to get prepared for, you know, I think what's on your list there are things that we'd like to achieve. And I know that you've had some conversation with the city, certainly visited my office, and I think we have some opportunities, certainly with some of the land holdings, to look at, you know, some of the, I think, prospects for what might be the future, so. We're not going to conclude anything here today, but again, we'll be back shortly on this item with some additional work, so.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Good. Thank you so much. Okay, I have Bert McChesney, and then Stephen Heisler. Stephen, just give me Stephen.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. My name is Stephen Heisler with the City of Rancho Dova. Also here with me is Bert McChesney with the Veterans Resource Centers of America. VRCA is the developer and manager of Phase Two, and services provider for all three phases of Mather Veterans Village. Also here is Stephen Dawes with Mercy Housing California. He's the developer and manager of Phases One and Three. We are here today in support of the goal to end homelessness in our region. We appreciate the decision the board made last week to provide additional funds to the whole Person Care effort. As we look forward to the positive impacts of that program, we must continue expanding the amount of housing with services available to this population in order to maximize our success. The Mather Veterans Village is a project well on its way to doing just that. For those who don't know much about the project, it is a three-phase, 150-unit, permanent and transitional housing project for our region's chronically homeless and disabled veterans, located at the former Mather Air Force Base, just one block away from the Veterans Administration Hospital. To give you a quick update on the current status of the project, Phase One of the three-phase project is complete and successfully operating. Its 50 units of permanent supportive housing were completely filled in less than 30 days after opening, and it has been running smoothly ever since. Phase Two, which is the 48-bed transitional housing and services-heavy component of the project, is moving steadily forward with its final architectural work, but it still has a funding gap. Phase Three, consisting of another 50 units of permanent supportive housing, has received a low-income housing tax credit award, and we are anxiously awaiting the final pricing of those credits, and our construction bids to determine if full funding has been met. We recognize, and want to thank you very much, that Sacramento County has been an integral partner to this project so far. Your help with providing the property, an initial $1 million grant, support for obtaining housing authority rental vouchers, and other funds has been instrumental in moving this project forward. I want you also to be confident that the City of Rancho Dova is doing its best to complete this project. To that end, in the last few years, the City of Rancho Dova has provided millions of dollars of project grants, loans, fee reductions, grant application support, and support for, I'm proud to say, not one, but two legislative amendments that made millions of dollars of additional funding possible for the project. Truly, we have gone above and beyond to help our veterans. In closing, this is a project that was started nearly a decade ago, and here we are today on the very edge of completion. The last two phases are shovel-ready, and your support for the requested $1 million today will significantly aid us as we continue to shoot for a construction start date of spring of next year. Thank you for your consideration, and I'm happy to take your questions.
Great. Thanks, Stephen. Any questions of Stephen? I think it's pretty self-explanatory, and I know there is some time sensitivity, and I've certainly shared that with our staff, and they're aware of that. So standby, may have some questions yet, but I don't have anybody punched up, so. Bert?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Bert McChesney, I'm with the Veterans Resource Centers of America. And to reemphasize what Stephen said, we're very close to being able to start construction. We've secured for Phase Two, two rounds of state VHHP money, Home Depot Foundation money, Department of Finance grant through the city, the strong support of the county, and it's been challenging, because that's the transitional and service component for all three projects. So 48, 46 units of transitional housing, and the ability to bring in a lot of service resources that otherwise would not be available in Phases One and Three, but we can use to complement those. But it's a much harder challenge to get the capital funding, because you're not, can't use tax credit financing, can't use Affordable Housing Program funding, you can't use MHP funding, so there was a lot of resources not available to us. It made it much more difficult to put the final funding together for that project. We're doing the final budgeting for it now. As Stephen said, we have a bit of a budget gap. We're also a little uncertain as to what's going to happen with construction costs, given the fires, given the hurricanes, all that's going to increase our costs with Phase Three. As Stephen can share, we've gotten tax credit financing approved, we've got a VHHP funding approved for that. So those, both projects are right on the cusp of being able to be completed, and thanks to the great support of the county and the city and all the other partners that we've had, including the American Legion, whose team helped provide a lot of the furnishings for Phase One. So they've been an integral part. And I'd like to offer, we have a meeting room available at Mather Village Now that you guys would be able to use in the interim if you need it. So we do have the space, and they've been great partners to that project. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks for that offer, Bert. I guess for either you or Stephen, very briefly, so what is, from the timeframe, and I know Stephen's here from Mercy as well, when do you need to have a knowledge of a commitment on that, that gap funding? Housing, yesterday?
Basically, yesterday. That's the final piece of the puzzle, and we'll need that in order to secure our construction loan. That we have to be able to demonstrate to the construction lender that we have all our financing in place, and it's that last piece that we're missing to be able to complete that.
Okay. Let me just turn to you, Navia. So if we, you know, if the board wanted to have this back before us, say, December the 5th, where you can examine, I mean, you just received a letter, we're aware of the request, you have been for some time, and in light of the sale of the property, we haven't received those proceeds yet, obviously, that's been plugged in for budgeting purposes into the, you know, to the general fund. But again, we knew this was on the horizon, and that's one of the reasons for the workshop. There's more to explore about other sites and, you know, their disposition, but this is probably the most critical. Is that something, do you believe you could be back at least by the 5th or the 12th? So, you know, again, with them needing to know that in order to go forward, and some decision by this board, assuming that there's a willingness to consider that, I think it needs to be pretty imminent, so.
Yeah, we can bring something back. Most likely by the 12th, we need to study the requests. We got the letter, we know they verbally have told us what they're requesting, but we want to look at the nature of the request, if that's a financial commitment. So I will look more towards the December 12th date to come back.
Okay, which would be basically, you know, less than four weeks from today, so. And I would just say that, you know, again, we've invested, reinvested very heavily at Mather, and I think it's important. And with this, if we're a partner, in addition to obviously having made available some land in the past, and obviously worked with the city and with our developers, we get additional permanent supportive housing into the inventory in a place that's already permitted, anticipated, and ready to go. And I think that's really important to the long-term prospects of some of the things we talked about just a moment ago on the, on the item, in moving people to permanent supportive housing or permanent housing, as well as the transitional component that'll be a piece of this as well. And there's, I think those beds, in addition to the community campus, I would just lastly say that this is immediately adjacent, as everybody's aware of, it's on this board and staff, is adjacent to Mather Community Campus. We've made significant investment in general fund dollars there, preserve that program and for, not just veterans, but obviously for homeless in a transition mode. And I would think that some of the revenues, whether they be current ones or in the future, that campus is in need of a bit of a refresh as it relates to, with the new development next door. We're looking a little worn around the edges there, doesn't take anything away from the program's success. So I think as a part of this, I'd like to certainly have some examination about that. And today was to kind of set the table for this discussion, so. Okay, I don't have anything else for, is there any questions of any of the folks that have presented? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those were only three speakers, and again, this is very abbreviated. I think there's a lot more focus we could bring to discussion about sites. Do you think, and I'm going to ask you about some agenda management here, but again, this has been a long time of waiting in coming to this board. I was very intent, at least as board chair, to try to get this to us. Obviously, we have a very imminent issue, but there's other discussion I think we ought to talk about as relates to the endowment for the Preserve, and, you know, some of the, you know, other future uses out there, including some commitments to complete some improvements. I would like to give it the due attention that I think it deserves, but we're not going to get that this afternoon, as we approach early evening. So I'd like to work with you on the agenda for the 12th, and put this early enough in the agenda where we could have that conversation.
Yeah, I just want to caution, I mean, we'll work on agenda management. 12th is getting to be fairly packed with other items, it's the end. This could end up going to January, but we do want to have that discussion with you, because there's some big policy issues that we want some direction from, from the board.
Okay. And maybe you could break those apart, then. Then if, having the bigger workshop, it's one thing about, you know, the requests that 's before us on the housing, which may have some shorter triggers that, you know, don't coincide with a workshop talking about more broadly the issues that have been outlined in the staff report and that Troy talked to. So again, I would be certainly interested if we needed to kind of break those out with the request for the permanent supportive housing contribution here, so. And then obviously, as we look to the veterans' requests and some other things, as property dispositions and use of those properties, working with the city, so. You think you can get back to, on the, on the one request by the 12th?
I think the main, what I heard today is there's a desire to get more detail from, forgot the gentleman's name that just spoke, about the request for $1 million. We're going to work with him.
Stephen Heisler on behalf of the city, yeah. And Mr. McChesney on behalf of veterans.
And then we'll come back to you on the 12th, on that particular request. I'll work with the clerk and with you, Supervisor Natale, on the broader discussion that we want to have today. When can we bring that back?
Okay.
And have that conversation.
And then we can continue this discussion about the unrestricted versus restricted funding and disposition of properties, and the investment potential for some of those monies.
Correct.
For some of the needs that we've identified here. For some of the needs that we've identified here, so. Okay, well, again, in light of the time, I would move, then we continue this workshop, I guess, abbreviated workshop.
Let us just bring up a new time. I need to manage the agenda for the 12th. We will bring it back on the 12th, it's just we, I don't have all the items in front of me, I don't want to get in this situation.
Okay, so you can bifurcate it, though. I'm okay with continuing with the workshop, but as far as the request on the, on the Mather Veterans Village.
Yeah, it's bifurcated, just that one item, we'll bring that back. If we have time on the 12th, we'll put the other items on.
Okay, all right. So, understood by then, everyone, do we need a motion effect? Or you want?
No.
Okay, so that's the direction, and so we will be back on the 12th relative to the Veterans Village. We'll be back potentially on the 12th or right after 1st of the year on the broader discussion about properties and some of the site utilization and so forth and disposition of those properties, so. Okay, is that okay with folks on the board? See, head nods? Okay, very good. Well, thank you for your patience, and we'll see somebody back on the 12th and others back maybe there thereafter, so. All right, that takes us then to Item 39. Again, a long-awaited item today, but I know there's been folks in the audience who wish to address this board on this, on matters that we're going to hear about here today for some time, so if you want to call.
Item 39 is the amendments to the Locke Foundation bylaws.
Okay, and we do have several speakers. If there are others who didn't sign up, you're welcome to. I have four speakers, and we'll ask, take some staff report and some board questions, and then we'll go to our, to our speakers, so.
Good evening, Chair Natoli, members of the board. Rob Leonard, Deputy County Executive. This evening, we bring to you proposed amendments to the Locke Foundation bylaws as brought forward by the Locke Foundation itself. Section 15 of the current Locke Foundation bylaws state, in a quote, "Any changes in the number, tenure, qualifications of directors, or any change in the composition and/or representative groups with directors shall be the subject of approval by the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors following a public hearing on the proposed change or changes." And so, as part of your consideration this evening, we do need to conduct a public hearing on the proposed amendments to the bylaws, again, as brought forward by the foundation itself. We're also presenting a recommendation that the board consider directing the county executive to assemble a multidisciplinary team to conduct a public forum in the Town of Galt as we've prepared for this.
You meant Locke.
You can go to Galt if you want to, but.
I'm sorry. The Town of Galt, as, as we learned of a number of issues related to sort of general county business and jurisdictional responsibilities associated with Locke, and a number of items that aren't related to county jurisdictional responsibilities that, that really aren't the subject for county engagement, but there are a number that are, and so we're suggesting that the board consider directing the county executive to conduct a public hearing in the Town of Galt. I'm going to make some brief background comments, and then with the concurrence of the chair, ask Stuart Whitehall, who's Chair of the Locke Foundation, to come forward and walk the board through the proposed modifications to the, to the bylaws. Locke is located in the Sacramento Delta, approximately 30 miles south of downtown Sacramento. The town was built in 1915 after a fire destroyed the Chinatown area of the city of, or the Town of Walnut Grove. Since at that time, the California Alien Land Act prohibited Chinese from owning real property, the town was built on land then owned by George Locke, and building owners leased land under their buildings on a month-to-month basis. Due to the unique status as the only town in the U.S. built exclusively by Chinese for Chinese, Locke was added to the National Registry of Historic Places in August 1970 and was designated as a national historic landmark in 1990. As currently reported on the Locktown website, the current population of Locke is between 70 and 80, and approximately 10% of that population is Chinese-American. In 2003, the Board of Supervisors took a series of actions to subdivide the property in the Town of Galt and combine the ownership interest of the buildings with the underlying land. At that time, the board also created two nonprofit organizations, the Locke Management Association and the Locke Foundation. The Locke Management Association, which we are not focused on tonight as no modified bylaws have, are, have come forward or been presented to you for consideration, the Locke Management Association owns, manages, and maintains common areas, including residential streets, parking lots, the garden area, and walking easements. The Locke Management Association also levies and collects monthly assessments from property owners to cover maintenance and operations and liability insurance. The Locke Foundation, which is the subject of, of this matter this evening, has a purpose of educating the public about Locke's history and legacy and solicits donations and grants to preserve the cultural and historic significance of Locke. The Locke Foundation staffs the Locke Boarding House Visitor Center and provides docent-led tours, maintains oral histories, and organizes special events, among, among other things. So, with that, in the concurrence of the chair, would, unless there are any questions, ask Stuart to come forward.
Yeah, let's see if there's any questions first of anything in the staff report. Just, just one, by way of background, when they were formed, both the foundation and the management association for the purposes as you outline them, there, there was a certain construct, though. The membership was basically to be reflected nearly identically or identically. Could you just run through that?
Sure.
Because, again, we may hear, and again, not to lose the focus on how this matter gets to us as it relates to the foundation, but I think that's not unimportant. If you could just, there is a chart in the staff report, but maybe you could just briefly address that, so there's understanding about that structure.
Yeah, I think at the highest level, in response to your question, Supervisor Natoli, the two bodies that I mentioned had the same body serving. The same individuals served as both the Locke Foundation and the Locke Management Association, and due to this, and do so to this date. They served the two different functions, two different sets of bylaws, two different functions, but the same people, same composition, just essentially wearing different hats. And as I understand it, at times, on a given evening, both bodies would meet, one meeting would close, and then the other meeting would open. So, two different bodies, same composition. The proposed bylaws that are before you this evening changed that. They do propose, the Locke Foundation is proposing to change the membership of the Board of Directors of, of the Locke Foundation. So, I could, I could walk through, if you'd like, the table.
Yeah, I don't know if that's necessary. I just, I think, though, as it relates to governance and certainly the management association responsibilities is initially called out for, and then the foundation's responsibility is initially called for, you know, we've got copies of that. But I do want to just, I want to ask council very quickly, because there's been a lot of correspondence, some as recently as, as this afternoon, and it continues to come at a pretty, pretty steady rate. My recollection is, Robin, that the, in the information and that council has advised that under the current construct, that irrespective of what private counsel might tell folks, that our council has opined that the Brown Act was to apply for the open meeting laws and for conduct of business, both the management association and the foundation. Is that, is that accurate, and maybe you could elaborate? Because I've, you know, I've been instructed that, you know, there's, we're going to probably hear from some folks who see that differently, both the foundation board members, maybe, as well as some citizen members. I want to be clear about what our advice has been, though, relative to that, so.
Let me back up a little bit. So, as, as this town from 1915 was transitioning from private property to an incorporated entity that has, an incorporated township that has private property rights, not just a single landowner. The board worked through with S H R A and consultants to set about finding the meets and bounds and the, designating the streets and the public areas that would be public, and identifying the properties that would be available for private property ownership. In doing that, C D B G money was used, and I think that's an important thing because that has a public purpose requirement. And here, we're establishing private property rights, yet having the sidewalks and the streets and those things that are part of a, of a normal town that usually evolves over time with those things set aside. So, what was set up in these two organizations is the organization that would be its own governance for its public purposes, for its public areas, and the, what the memorials and those kinds of things would be done, and then essentially an H O A that would help organize how they want the town to look and how they want the town to be managed. As it was set up with C D B G money, it was required that those public purposes be conducted like a public entity, yet it allowed for a 15-year transition period. So, yes, it was set up that it would be a Brown Act-governed body, but it does allow for, and as long as the county and the State Parks Department were part of those governing bodies as they were constituted, it would be mandatory that the Brown Act is followed. But it does allow for some transition over time to an entity that's independent and stands alone. So, as we transition out of it with its bylaws changes, that may not be mandatory as it goes forward.
Okay, but, but heretofore, to this very moment, when that applies and should have applied, and that's what council has offered, and so, because again, I know I've.
That is correct, but they have council and they have responsibilities unto their, their constituents as their membership requires of them.
Right, but to what you said, though, form utilizing public monies for the disposition of, of helping to map the town, to unite the underlying properties with the structures above, and to marry that with the, you know, private ownership of, of numbers of buildings and other facilities, but also, the county still has a role. I mean, you know, incorporated or not.
A modicum, a very minor role at this point.
Well, no, no, I'm talking about generally. We still do building inspection, we still do code enforcement.
Oh, sure.
We still, I'm talking about, you know, when you talk about incorporated town, those services are not charged for them, they're just as if they would provide for any other Delta town that's not incorporated as a municipality. But I, I just want to be clear because I know that the question has been posed, I've seen correspondence, I've seen what council may have advised the foundation, and in, over the last year, year and a half, that they could take their meetings, they didn't have to publicly notice those meetings and so forth, and my view has been and will remain, unless you tell me that there's some other legal parameter that would allow those meetings to go to that particular, to not have to conform to the Brown Act, because that was the way this was formed, and until these bylaws are amended, if and when, then that still applies, right?
Applies, and it would be for those persons in those meetings to answer as to what took place.
Right, but I, I'm not saying that, but I just said, but the L M A and the foundation were and are required as of this moment, unless we change that, and I understand we have the ability to change that, to conform to, to open meeting laws and to Public Records Acts and to post in meetings and so forth, so.
That's how it was set up, yes.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks. Rob, okay. I don't have any other questions, and now we have some folks, so Stuart, if you want to come forward and.
Thank you, Rob. Good evening. I know it's been a long evening. Hello especially to Chair Natoli, he's been a good friend of Locke. I kind of, in the report that you've received, you have a lot of the changes and whatnot that we've brought forth, and hopefully I can clarify some of the whys. The Locke Foundation, and to clarify something that was just brought up, we have not for years operated with the same boards. We've had a mixed board, and this goes well back into the period when Supervisor Natoli's Chief of Staff, Pat Brazil, was on both boards. This is something that's been going on for a long time. Again, we're a town of only 70 people. There are two boards with 13 chairs open, and it can be quite a burden for someone to serve on both boards. Initially, the Locke Foundation was a very little sister. We had no funding, we had a budget of zero, we had zero in the bank. And whereas the Locke Management Association pretty much has guaranteed income through assessments and whatnot. But as the years went on, the Locke Foundation did start doing many of the things that we wanted to do in our mission goals, and that's primarily to educate the public and support the Town of Galt. So, we started having our Locke Asian Pacific Spring Festival, which is our kind of, our signature event of our town, like the Revesta Bass Derby or the Cordling Pear Fair. We constructed our memorial park and, which houses our memorial and the Tile Project. And in 2006, when State Parks bought the old boarding house in Locke, they refurbished it and opened it as a unit of State Parks. And through contract negotiations, the Locke Foundation took over the responsibility of keeping the boarding house open four days a week, maintaining the inside of it, getting insurance for the directors. The Locke Foundation continued to grow. We opened up a membership, put out our historic walking tour, put out our newsletter, getting farther and farther away from what the Locke Management Association is, which really is a, as Rob Leonard mentioned, they take care of property in town. Locke Foundation has nothing to do with it. We're a charity that's charged with education. And now we do the Chinese New Year celebration out there. We funded signage, we have a, we just expanded, we being the Locke Foundation, expanded our scholarship program from three to four this year. We have docent-led tours, et cetera. We grew, our coffers grew, and individuals that were, that initially served simultaneously on both boards through attrition and interest decided, some of them decided they may want to be on the L M A board, some wanted to be on the Locke Foundation board. And then the question, I dealt with Ms. June Powell's Mays a lot about is, do you have to serve on both boards? If not, if you serve on one board, can you serve on another? If you serve on one board, can you not serve on another? And Ms. Mays did actually work with me on the bylaws and actually gave me quotes to put in in specific areas, clarifying who can sit on the board. The seats mandated for both boards initially, which were three residential seats, three commercial seats, three Asian organizations, State Parks, Historic at Large, and then Sacramento County. Those seats have suffered with the foundation, and I'm going to speak only for the foundation here. And we only have one of the three residential seats filled, we have two of the three commercial seats filled, we lost one of our Asian organizations that wanted to participate in the Locke Foundation. State Parks opted not to seat someone on our board because they were worried about conflicts of interest. We don't have someone with historic expertise, and then, of course, Sacramento County has not opted to seat anybody on our board since Pat Brazil's retirement. So, we only have seven people on our board now, but we can't have any more people on our board, and we have people willing and wanting to be on our board that already volunteer for Locke Foundation activities, they sit at our boarding house, they lead docent tours, et cetera. et cetera. They want to be on our board, but they can't because of the makeup of our board now in these mandatory seats. So what we're, what we'd like to do is cut our board down to 11 seats max, make the mandatory seating to commercial, one of which would be a liaison with the Locke Management Association, cut it down to one residential seat representing the residents of the town, two Asian organizations, and I've lost my train of thought on the last one. So what we have is five mandated seats and six at-large seats. So, and we're really after separating the LMA from the Locke Foundation. The Locke Foundation would like to operate as a traditional 501(c)(3). And we have had, we've hired a lawyer to help clarify this situation, especially regarding the Brown Act. And he state, and this lawyer is the signator on our original articles of incorporation and is one of the main lawyers that helped put the original community advisory report together on Locke back in 2003. And he simply states, no, we're not associated with Sacramento County. We receive no funds from Sacramento County. Sacramento County doesn't seat anyone on the Locke Foundation Board, so we're not subject to the Brown Act. It really wouldn't be that big a deal. I mean, we're, transparency is not an issue with us, but we have issues with people who are attacking, simply attacking the Locke Foundation. So we just want to be as effective as possible. So I had been working with Ms. June Powell's Mays for the last 10 months, but the thing that really put this whole issue of changing our bylaws up in the front burner is, I'm also in discussion and negotiating a new concession contract with California State Parks, and rewriting our operational plans and our interpretive plans. And as you all may know, California State Parks is going through their transformation period, there's new designations, new requirements as far as money and whatnot goes, and Locke Foundation is moving along with them and trying to develop what's called a cooperating association with them. They are not comfortable with the Locke Foundation not having a resolution of our association with Sacramento County. So we can't move forward with our contract with State Parks until there is a resolution. So--
Stewart, is there any time sensitivity relative to that contract as it relates to the state? I mean, obviously, you've had the relationship, so I mean, again, it's not a matter of weeks or anything like that. Obviously, you bring this matter of force for a combination of reasons, but is there any particular time sensitivity to that? Does the contract expires when, end of this calendar year?
We've been going year to year.
Okay, we're going year to year already?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's a very slow process.
Okay.
So I would like to point out one thing. Locke has been a lot of headaches, I know for you guys and especially for us out here, but Locke is extremely special. It's a place that Sacramento County really can be proud of. It should be one of those places, like Old SAC or whatnot, when you have friends and family come in, take them out to Locke, it's a mind-blowing experience. It's a jewel, and it's significant on a county, state. It's got national significance, it's a national historic landmark, it's got internet, it's the only rural agricultural Chinese-American community in the United States.
Still remaining--
And the Locke Foundation is the only organization whose principal goal is to advocate for the town of Locke and preserve its history and to educate the public about it, and we just want to be as effective as possible. I hope this--
I'll only correct you on one thing, I frequently take family from out of town to Locke, I never take them to Old Sacramento.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Keep bringing them back, and I bet you they like it, too. And it's getting better, it's getting cleaner in the front, the main streets, the back. There's many other projects that the Locke Foundation is trying to do in reference to the history and culture, and the Locke Genealogy Project, the history, the building genealogy, the Locke Centennial Photographic Survey of the whole town. We want to have, expand our oral history program, and I want our relationship with the county to be a good one, rather than be a constant source of headaches, you know, regardless of how this goes today, we will still have, obviously, with a town like Locke have a lot of overlap with the county. So I'd like to encourage you all to vote for the change in bylaws. So, thank you.
Thanks, Stewart. Any other questions, Mr. Wathell? Okay, good, stand by, we have some before we're done, but, okay, thanks, Stewart. All right, Mr. Leonard, anything else you want to add before I go to public comment?
Uh, no, nothing to add.
Okay. All right, I have a number of folks signed up, about a half dozen, and I'm going to give three minutes to each speaker. James Motlow, Russell Oms, some tickets in order that were given to me, Deborah Mendel, Rhonda Maiden, Ronnie Maiden, Lisa Kirk, and Martha Ash. So, James, you're up.
Good evening. Thank you for this chance to speak. I am James Motlow, co-author of the book Bitter Melon: Inside America's Last Ruled Chinese Town, which features oral histories in my photographs of the residents of Locke. Bitter Melon was named on the Commonwealth Club as Best California History when first published in 1988. It's now in its sixth printing, and I brought each of you a copy today in order that you may use it to enhance your knowledge of Locke. I lived in Locke for most of the 1970s and was fortunate enough to return in 2010. Today, it is my community and my home. For the last three years, I've been the treasurer of the Locke Management Association. I want to offer my support with the proposed changes to the Locke Foundation bylaws. I also want to offer my support for the Locke Community Forum. As treasurer of the LMA, I would like to give you a bit of background of some of the challenges faced. The LMA is currently composed of 31 members who own 51 properties of commercial and residential buildings plus garage. In addition, there is the Boarding House Museum that is owned by the state, and one building that is owned by the LMA, which is currently under contract to be sold, for a total of 53 assessed properties. Of these current 31 members, 15 live in Locke and 16 live elsewhere. When I started as treasurer, there were four members of the association who were refusing to pay their assessments. Following our CC's and ours, I worked with three of them to pay what they owed, which was collectively over $10,000. In the end, all three were settled in small claims court in favor of the LMA. The fourth is an estate of the deceased owner, and I hope to deal with that estate this coming year. My position is a volunteer one that I take very seriously. I want Locke to be healthy. My involvement in Locke is no different when I lived in the 1970s, when I and my non-Chinese neighbors like Russell Oms helped our elderly neighbors with home repairs inside and out, water and sewage repair, general town maintenance, in providing transportation from everything, from doctor's visits to food shopping. We did this all because it was the right thing to do and because we loved our neighbors in the town. That same sense of giving back is what propels me to give up the hundreds of hours of my time that being treasurer has taken. What has been difficult is the non-stop continuing lies, disruptions, and half-baked fake news that flows forth from a single individual whose stated goal is to bankrupt the LMA through endless litigation, whose claim that the Locke was a global village and should not be designated as anything special, who wants the LMA dissolved and the CC and ours rewritten to her own liking. While the courts have sided with and awarded the LMA every step of the way, the true history of Locke still prevails, and the LMA still has the support and backing of the vast majority of the members. I worked with Leo Goto in the county, in the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency in 1970, and all of its public meetings concerning Locke. Currently, I, along with the LMA Board members, have been working with June Powell Mays, supervising deputy council to help best to address, to respond to the endless, baseless attacks about our procedures. We have met with you, Mr. Supervisor Don Natoli, to also discuss best how to address these attacks. We deeply appreciate their knowledge and their input. With that, thank you for letting me share my thoughts, and I hope you enjoy my book.
Thanks, James. I have, already, thanks. Okay, great. Next, Russell Oms, Russell? And then Deborah?
Yes, my name is Russell Oms, and I'm the current chairman of the Locke Management Association. I've been the chairman before, years ago. I just want to say I really heartily endorse this change in the bylaws for the Locke Foundation. Earlier, when we would have two meetings in the same night, the first meeting might go on for, I don't know, till 11 o'clock, and then we adjourn and then open up the next meeting, and by that time, it was like, okay, let's get out of here. So what we did is we separated the meetings, so, but that was a problem, too, because, as we said, we had a 13-member board, and people were driving sometimes 60 miles one way to get there. So it meant two times a month they would have to come to Locke. And the river road is not a very nice road at night, and a lot of our members are getting older, and luckily, the fog is gone, but they were driving back in the fog. So I'm going to try to stay and speak just to this agenda item, and that is the foundation. So it's going to be wonderful for them to operate as a separate entity, really. We will have accountability because whatever monies that they get in any decision they wanted, anything they want to do in town, has to come through us. We will also have one member for certain on the board to report back to us. And it'll give them the freedom to get help from outside of Locke, because Locke has 73 people, 74 people, and it just doesn't have the bench, I mean, like a football team, we don't have any, we couldn't even do a football team. I mean, we have, we couldn't do a volleyball team. I mean, there's just not enough people that will volunteer. And was what James was saying, it's quite onerous what we face from one person. And I don't know what to do with that, I don't know what you can do with that, but for six years, one person has been on a mission to destroy us. I don't want to stay on topic, I'm going to speak, hopefully afterwards, to explain it. But I heartily endorse it, I look forward towards it, and I believe Stewart and the membership he will gather will really be a benefit to Locke. Thank you.
Thanks, Russell. Okay, Deborah? And then Deborah's followed by Ronnie Maiden.
Good evening. I'm Deborah Mendel, and I am currently on the Locke Management Association Board of Directors. I'm also the secretary. I also live in town, and it's my home, and I own several properties in town. And I'm here to express support for these changes. I used to be on the foundation, but as Stewart expressed, it's been difficult to be on both boards. I was the secretary until last December when I resigned because I'm just up to here with the volunteer work that I do for the LMA Board of Directors. So it's just, it's a lot of work, and since we've, the LMA's been in a litigation, we've had to let go of the property manager, and the volunteers like myself, we wind up also be taking on property manager-type roles. Lately, I'm the parking, fire lane parking enforcement lady, you know, noticing when someone's parked in a fire lane, putting notices on people's cars. This is stuff that a property manager would do, so we've got our hands full. And the work that Stewart has done as chairman of the foundation and the other directors that still remain on the foundation is obvious in their revisions. It's come time, I had no idea about this 15-year transition thing. I'd love to know more about this because I didn't even know about this. So we appreciate, though, the, LMA appreciates that there is one line, maybe more, in our bylaws, the LMA bylaws, that says that the boards shall be the same directors. So we would be happy to address at least that, you know, as soon as possible. We're not prepared to do any revisions in the immediate future on the LMA bylaws, but this is a great thing, it's going to open it up. I know a lot of the volunteers for the board, and I know some of them have chomped at the bit, hoping that they could actually participate more than as volunteers, that they could sit on the board and have even more input, and it's just always, it's just been nothing but good stuff. And I've got 50 seconds here, I just want to show you what the board has done. This is Locke Foundation has gotten, Locke Foundation's gotten road signs, you know, road signs, rather, whoops. These were really important, something that, you know, we couldn't get done for ages, and I think it's the treasurer of the foundation, Eileen Leong, she finally made that happen. We've got a beautiful marker from the Native Sons of the Golden West that's in a common area in Locke, and just recently, they translated that placard into Chinese. And, you know, I live in Locke, these, people are always looking at this stuff in town, and it's just great what the foundation does. Just expand it, approve these changes, I think it's going to really work out well.
Thanks, Stewart. Just a question for Ronnie, because, so where's the call out for the 15-year transition? Is that in the bylaws?
It's in the board packet from April 8th, 2003.
I'm just trying to find it, that's why I'm asking right now, I'm trying to find--
And, Robert, I don't believe that was necessarily hardwired into it, there wasn't a hard calendar set, it was, as I recall, the language dealt to, essentially, it was expected that--
Right.
--with the construct that resulted from the action in 2003, that as the organization stood up and moved forward, there would be a certain sort of maturity, my word, not a word that was in the report, of those organizations, and that it was expected that modifications would be made--
Yes.
--as they stood up and started to establish independence.
And it was to establish the board assurances that the CDBG money was, would be paid back within approximately that amount of time.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not contesting, I just didn't see where that's at, so maybe somebody could find the particular points, and I will hear from other speakers, I just, I was, I heard you say that, and I know it was referenced in Deborah's comments as well, so. Okay, Ronnie, come forward, and then following Ronnie, I have Lisa, and then Martha.
Hi, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Rhonda Lee Maiden, aka Ronnie, which is how Don knows me. I'm actually a full, was a full CAC member for all of the years that it took place. I'm a founding LMA Board Member, I am a founding Locke Foundation Member. I'm no longer on either of those bodies. It interests me, what Stewart says, said about starting with zero is true, however, upon, immediately upon becoming the Locke Foundation, they received funding from three different Chinese organizations. About the changes, proposed changes, I would really like the people of Locke to participate in discussions about this. The people of Locke are left out of everything. The board members behind me, the LMA board members behind me, two of them live together, one of them, one of them is a renter of the other, a fourth who is not here bought a house from one of the two, those two people. When they, when they state that one person is making all of this unfounded trouble, that's not true. There are several people who've moved out of town because of these folks. I would really like you to pay close attention to what is going on. I was on the board for a year, I went off and then was asked to step back in. I kept insisting that Brown Act must be followed. I was shouted down for years. When I was off of the board, from the audience, I said Brown must be followed. I was told it did not, and it was not, for years. I also said that Davis Sterling must be followed since we own land in common. We were specifically not supposed to be in HOA. There were many people who were against us being-- There were many people who were against us being in HOA, but we still own land in common, therefore Davis Sterling does apply. Again, I was shouted down about that. Before we make any changes, any changes at all, the people of Locke should be consulted. We should start having open meetings that people aren't afraid to attend, and that doesn't happen either. Don, that first year, before we became the CAC, well, the two and a half years, that first year that we were holding meetings in Locke, just in the transition process, and afterwards, we had committees, not based with board members, but of people in the town. We had a garden committee of people who actually gardened and people who were concerned about it. We argued. We've got all of our fights out there in that little forum, so that we could come up with recommendations. That doesn't happen anymore. The people of town, of Locke, are left out of much, much, much of the things that go on there. Yes, they've had some nice, the Locke Foundation has had some nice events, so I'm told. I wasn't told about them before they happened, many, many times. I wasn't given notice or asked for my recommendation for people to be on the board. Please think about this carefully.
Okay.
Thank you. And please check into the stuff that's going on with the LMA.
Okay. Thanks, Ronnie.
Oh, as usual, I'm an hour and a half late for my class at Zach State.
Sorry about that.
Hi.
Okay.
Lisa Kirk, I've been a business--
He can write you a note if you need me, Ronnie.
A business owner in Locke for 12 years. And I did look forward, when I first came to town, about it progressing. And I know the foundation has done some great things, but what I wanted to see was the streets improved, the walkways repaired. We have a walkway that has a hole that a child fell in the other day. And these are the things that I thought a nonprofit could do. We went to Teshar, one of the Chinese organizations, went to Teshar Construction, asked if they would get involved in helping to do maybe some sidewalk repair. They said, you know, you guys are in the middle of all this litigation, and didn't want to help. Before you close down the foundation, maybe you should have a meeting with them, a joint meeting, and involve the state about what you can do to improve the common area walkways. We invite tourists everywhere. This just isn't about the back. It's about all the people in the front, walking up and down. And the city of Ileton got sued over a similar situation. So, you know, we need to pay attention, and I don't want to see it separated at this point. And if you do separate it, you know, we need to have some input on, I don't need to be appointed as a business owner by the directors. The business owners there can appoint their own people. The nepotism needs to end. Do not take that clause out. Arbitration needs to put in there. Yes, we've had litigation, because arbitration was not in there. And we're not even discussing the association, which is a part of this. We have to discuss the association and the fact that it comes under Brown Act and is an HNO at the same time. They just sued someone under HOA, but you really did a public taking of someone's property under a public entity. So, you know, we'd like to see the litigation end. We'd like to move the town forward, but it's created such a rift. And I was told early on, I was an invitee, that's the way the CCNR and bylaws explain who I am, and that I had no rights. So that does put me aside. But I have an interest, and I do love Locke, and I do love what I do there, and I love all the people that come there, but I want it to be safe. So before you start changing everything, maybe sit down and have a meeting about the association and the foundation, because you've cut out, if you make the foundation private, then as far as getting grants to do improvements or to buy buildings, does that just fall on the association? And can they get those grants if there's not a foundation attached to them? So I think there's a lot more to look at this, and I would appreciate a town meeting that includes the foundation and the association. And as far as CBG money being paid back, I think they had $60,000. I don't think it's been paid back. And if you're talking about the money that bought the property underneath those people's houses, I don't think all of that's been paid back either. So you might want to look at that. And the fact that Brown Act, I never thought the foundation should follow the Brown Act, and you guys need to do some ratification of the appointments of the association. You've let that go. And because you've really not had oversight, it's, we've gone into this horrible lawsuit that I hope someday will end. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Okay, Martha. Martha's the last person to sign up to speak on this.
Good evening. Thank you so much for all the hard work and long hours you guys put in. I don't know how you do it. Could you put some of this up here? Thank you so much. I am the, I am the person who bought the property back. I'll try to keep this on task here. Okay. I have a, you can't talk about the Locke Foundation without also talking about the Locke Management Association, because they have duplicate bylaws, duplicate board structure as prescribed, 13 chairs, and duplicate seating. Three of the seats are designated with a racial requirement, and they are both public boards. That is wrong. It's wrong. It's discriminatory. It's unconstitutional. And the makeup of the current population of Locke is about 80% Latino people. How about we get some board seats for them, if you're going to designate racial requirements for matters that, board structure for matters of our town? Duplicate bylaws. More time is needed to allow due process for the residents and homeowners of Locke and Locke South to be properly notified and given the opportunity, before you make any changes to this Locke Foundation board regarding removing voting rights or the rights of the public to attend their meetings and other Brown Act mandates. Walkways. Locke Foundation has preservation purposes as well as the Locke Management Association. They've got duplicate, that is duplicated in their purposes, preservation. So, and the 2003 document that you folks sent me under my CPRA request, 1720, shows a 2003 Locke document that on the bottom of page 26 states that the Locke Management Association shall maintain the sidewalks and public walkways. Lisa Kirk mentioned that there's a gate, somebody, a kid fell into a hole the other day. There is a huge, six-inch-wide board missing in the walkway next to Al the Wops that's been missing for several months now. And, you know, and there's cracked sidewalks all over the place. The Locke Foundation, together with the Locke Management Association boards, they took it upon themselves to remove the cement sidewalk on Lot 159, which is a common ground area, and replace it with tan bark. Now, this was, and they created a trip hazard coming over to my ice cream parlor. They removed the ADA access that I had installed at the property that they sued me for, and they continue to now bill me for my violation of not being their prioritized race, which is in their both bylaws. But they removed the ADA access, and they recently built a fence and installed two great big brass plaques that completely block off the wheelchair access to that property.
Martha, you need to wrap it up.
You know--
I know there's been a lot of history. You've been before the board, but it's equal time here, so. I've got another minute. Let's go.
Okay. Thank you. Need to remove the discrimination from both, both sets of bylaws. Article 5, Section, I believe it's 9 or 10D. Remove that discriminatory clause that gives both boards a mandate to consider the ancestry as a factor in the assignment of right of first refusal. Remove that clause, because that's what they took my property away from me for, and now their lawyers want everything else that I own. So I might be living in a refrigerator box soon, and I'll be coming to your board meetings, speaking for homeless rights, if that happens. Please allow everybody a meeting before you make any changes to the Locke Foundation. Dissolve the Locke Management Association. Its purpose was gone long, long ago after the land transfer was made, and Locke does not need, does not need a homeowners' association for 31 property owners and about 50 people living there. Courtland gets along just fine without, we don't need the double taxation in Locke of $1,400 a year to pay for no services whatsoever and trip hazard, fire hazards. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Martha. Okay, that concludes the speakers. Let me ask my colleagues, any questions of staff at this structure? Ms. Ross?
I just want to-- I want to clarify that I understand this is kind of a new, all this is new to me. This is not an incorporated city. It's a corporation through the Secretary of State, basically.
Correct. It is not an incorporated city.
And so we were involved until 2015, at which time it kind of concluded our involvement as far as having ownership of any properties. All the properties were sold back to the owners and the city.
That actually occurred back in the early 2000s. That was part of the, it occurred a bit over time, but the properties were united, a lot of the land was held--
Leased.
Yeah, they were leased. And so the buildings above were owned by residents and business owners and other property owners, but the property underneath was, as outlined in the staff report, that was part of what we did, is united the land and the structures as a part of that. And then folks were able to own both, and there was purchase opportunities at the time we actually did the transaction. Some of that didn't occur right away, but most of it did. So that was part of the part and parceling of the--
So basically, what they're, what they're asking is to change the structure of the board and separate it out, so that the Locke Foundation manages the business and the Locke Management Association manages the properties. They care, it's kind of like CCNRs and property manage. Is that correct?
That's correct, with the foundation looking to make some changes in the defined composition of the body, existing bylaws versus proposed bylaws in the process.
So they don't all have to be members of the Locke Management Association to be on the Locke Foundation board?
That's correct.
And it, okay. And--
May I clarify--
Okay, yeah, sure.
The Locke Foundation doesn't have anything to do with businesses. And most of what we heard here today is Locke Management Association. We're not, the Locke Foundation is not involved in any lawsuits. We have nothing to do with the buildings, the sale, the right of first refusal assessments, any of that. We don't make any decisions regarding those. We're a 501(c)(3) charitable organization--
You're the Locke Management--
This is the Locke Foundation.
Oh, the Locke Foundation is the management, is the 501(c)(3) in the Locke--
The Locke Management--
Management is the 501(c)(6).
Six, correct. So we're, the Locke Foundation doesn't have anything to do, although with what Ms. Kirk said regarding fixing sidewalks and making the town safer, the Locke Foundation certainly could have, as we grow, the ability to deal with these things. But when it comes to the nuts and bolts of the land and whatnot, that's Locke Management Association stuff. We're a foundation--
You're a nonprofit.
We're a nonprofit, yeah.
But the management association receives the annual--
Assessments.
--membership or assessments.
Yeah.
And they put that money back into the--
We operate on donations.
--town to make the town better.
They manage the--
And you want to, and you want to operate as a nonprofit and move forward as a nonprofit.
Correct. The only funds we get are what are donated and what we make on events. We don't have any responsibilities for maintaining the physical part of Locke.
And the only thing noticed today is the foundation.
The foundation wants to clean up their side of it and not be so connected to the LMA.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thanks. I'm going to just weigh in here with some of the other questions that, and certainly I appreciate all the testimony. I know folks in the audience certainly have all been part of not only the conversation, but the work and the efforts and all the, even some of the back and forth that's occurred in the community. But I think the initial establishment was not only well-intentioned, I think it was something that was very, very important to bring, you know, the ownership of the buildings and a lot of the original, either descendants of the original residents of the town, and allow those property rights that were excluded, going back to early part of the last century, to, you know, wipe away that particular scourge and to allow the ownership to be in the rightful hands of those folks who had the buildings, in a lot of cases, maintained, lived there, raised their families there and such, and certainly the businesses that were conducted from time the town was established up until this very, very moment. But clearly, the creation of this, and I appreciate certainly Stuart's explanation and offerings here is on behalf of the foundation, but this is entangled a bit by design. I think there was the overlap and some expectation. Again, it was not tried and proven as related to self-governance. Obviously, structure mirrored both the foundation structures, nonprofit structures, but also, you know, management association. But I think he was correct. It wasn't established as a homeowners' association, it was a management association. The result is discussion about common ground and about common usage and some appreciation for the aesthetics, as well as obviously some of the intended improvements, many of which have been put in place over the last, you know, 15, 15 years. And I'm going to suggest here for today's purposes, again, that's why I asked Stuart earlier about any time sensitivity on the boarding house. I think that as I've talked with Mr. Gill and certainly Mr. Leonard about this, that I think certainly there can be a separation. I mean, they are, you know, created with a structure that links them, but I think some of the discussion about management activities, as well as obviously the foundation and their direction reflect, you know, difference of opinion. We've heard some of that here this evening, and I think having a town forum, so now I'm going to look to you, you know, we can certainly bring in purposes of bringing this multidisciplinary team. But I think to have this discussion in that setting, you know, and again, I think we need to be clear about what's before this board, and the fact anything that relates to the LMA would have to be initiated at the LMA level and come back to this board as well. But I think for purposes of proceeding that having that town forum, and hopefully we'll get a place big enough to hold all interested parties, and to have a discussion, to have a date to come back to this board, certainly with keeping in consideration for the foundation requests for change in bylaws. But I think that it relates to governance, too, that the state opted out of the LMA some time ago, and as Stuart pointed out, they opted out of the foundation. The county has not made an appointment since Papazil left county service, and she was not just my appointee, she was the county's appointee. And I think that we need to sort through those things a bit. Again, you know, we can't change them of our own volition, but I think some direction from this board is to having the town forum, the community forum, and let's have the conversation here. Again, we may not hear anything different than we've heard here today. We might, though, as be in a setting where it's certainly probably more comfortable for folks to come and speak their mind. And then I think, you know, to try, you know, get this on a path where some of those issues can be addressed. And obviously, we have a specific request on the foundation, and I'm not going to ignore that, but I don't necessarily feel compelled to have to act on it here this afternoon. I think what we ought to do is have this community forum, and then we can recalendar this particular request, and it may be accompanied by other, other actions as well. But I think in order to, you know, provide enough information to not only me as a representative of the area, and again, I will say this for the record once again, that Locke is a very unique place. It's-- this particular request and it may be accompanied by other actions as well. But I think in order to, you know, provide enough information to not only me as a representative of the area, and again, I will say this for the record once again, that Locke is a very unique place, it's very special, it has a lot of character and people have, you know, some very, you know, deep affinity for the community in which they live, in which they conduct their business and for all the history that's been written about and the history that's made there every day. And I'm very appreciative of that and of the events and the highlight and I think the national, international stature that that community has. But it's also a place where people reside and connect local businesses and so forth. And I think that this approach to self-governance, I think, was done in a very thoughtful deliberative way and we looked at how that was going to be part and parceled out relative to six and six and then those 12 making the selection of the other party on the LMA and linking the LMA and the foundation, not necessarily in perpetuity, but certainly as a part of the effort to move the improvements forward, to provide for that governance and representation both at the local level, but also recognizing that there was interest from other organizations because of the cultural and historical relationships and appreciation for all that that brings to that community. But also then with the state, because of the ownership of some of the land and obviously the boarding house and other lands that are adjacent and then obviously the county's involvement. So that was done with clear intent and I think with the expectation that we certainly could revisit that as it evolved and it's not, again, it's probably appropriate that we're here at this point in time. I didn't know about the 15 years and I'm still wondering what that is in the staff report. But nonetheless, we're here, we're almost 15 years later and, you know, for whatever successes, and there's probably a lot of those, and any other challenges, I think it's appropriate that we have a town meeting. We can reschedule this for January or February to come back for the full consideration. But I think as a part of that, to have a conversation then about the other side of this, that's not necessarily the request before us, but obviously relates to the LMA, the representation there, seats that are unfilled and, you know, what that presents from difficulty and a very small number of folks to draw from when you look at it, you know, whatever that count is, it's not even 100. And, you know, think that people are going to, you know, continually step forward and expect that they would do that. That's a lot on the residents and the parties, the business owners and so forth to expect that. But that was part of the challenge, I think, of the piloting of this governance structure. So I'm going to suggest now, and I don't know if, you know, how soon we can get that meeting put together. I appreciate the notice that was given on this and obviously those that were interested and able to be here, were here. But I think we can expect that probably if we convene that and maybe we convene the two bodies with a duly noticed discussion and, you know, allow for sufficient time for input and have that discussion right there in the community. I think it's appropriate, I'm prepared to attend that and I encourage you and others to help put that together. So that's kind of where I land this evening and I'm not looking for a long delay, but I think it's appropriate that we have that meeting first.
We will work on that meeting.
Okay, what do you think that we could do before the Christmas holiday?
We will give it an attempt.
Okay, so we're going to see if we can do this in the next four to five weeks.
If not, it will be early January.
Okay. And again, get a place that's accessible and an evening that doesn't conflict with other things and we can continue this item. I'm fine with, you know, we actually putting into a date in, you know, in late January.
Let us come back with a date. Let's get the meeting scheduled, we can announce the date.
Okay.
Make sure everybody knows when we're coming back.
Because, you know, I'm not looking for long delays, just for everybody's purposes here. This has been a bit delayed getting to us for a variety of reasons and, you know, requests from the foundation came in many, many months ago. We've had requests to have issues in Locke, you know, discussed at our level and there's been, you know, it hasn't been this energy around it. So I'm going to, again, I think certainly with deference to my colleagues and the hour, I ask that we do that and let's set a goal of being back here within about eight weeks, two months, being back to this board, if not sooner, and certainly have a community meeting as soon as possible and not to conflict with the holidays and then we'll go from there. Any other?
Is that a motion?
That would be my motion.
Second.
Okay.
Can I just ask, can I just thank the author? Is it Mr. Mottlau?
Hello.
And I wanted you to know, this is a beautiful book and I love to read and I was wondering if you'd consider signing it. I knew once we voted, you would probably be on your way home.
That comes with a cost.
And I have a library, so I will keep this in my library. It's in line, by the way, behind about 10 other books that I'm supposed to be reading. But, thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, I was assuming you had one of the tickets saying that I was wanting to speak on-
Yeah, we're going to get to you next, you're at SEIU. Yeah, we're getting there, we're just completing this item and we're going to come to you right next. So thank you for your patience. So I would move that we continue the matter and we'll bring it back. We don't have a date certain, so if you're going to continue it too-
Not date certain, I think, but I get the direction is to try to get the meeting going in December, come back to you in January.
Come back in January, that's the intent of the motion, is to bring this back and with the benefit of the input of the community meeting, so. Okay, that's my motion. Have a second?
Second.
Second, okay, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, and thank you all for being here this afternoon, this evening. Have a safe return to your destination and we will be down in Locke fairly shortly, so. Thanks. Okay, with that then, we do have some off-agenda speakers and I know some have had to leave, so I don't know if you wanted, if you were to designate a spokesperson after most of the folks had to leave, so you can just, we can give you some time.
My name is Mikal Faruki and I'm a disabled person who resides in Ms. Peters' district. I have with me Ms. Tabitha Otterston, who is my care provider under IHSS. I noticed a large amount of distress here by members of the board about all the issues of homelessness and drug addiction and alcohol use and the lethality of the people who use alcohol and drugs and all these issues lumped together. And I wish to bring to the board's attention that there's something backing this up, which is the disabled individuals and the IHSS care providers. Because what we have here is IHSS providers who are struggling to provide the services that disabled individuals need, faced with an increasing rent situation here in Sacramento because we don't have any rent control ordinances unlike other metropolitan areas like San Francisco and Los Angeles. So we have investors moving in, buying up property, raising rents, putting the disabled individuals under stress. I wish to speak for a disabled friend of mine who is, has a tiny studio apartment which they're now demanding $900 a month for, which way exceeds his social security payments, struggling to get it paid through SHRA. On the other hand, the IHSS providers who get sometimes 20 hours, sometimes 30 hours at a time at $10.80 an hour, which is even less than a lot of the proposed minimum wages in areas like Portland, et cetera. I expected to pay rent, feed and clothe their families and provide in-home services for us disabled people. We've got a confluence of events that will, could possibly result in disabled people not receiving these services, not receiving the help they need, being pushed onto the streets, being made homeless, seeking self-medication through street drugs, which a lot of them have done, giving up on the system altogether, hiding under bridges because they don't want to come forward, that they've been exasperated by the lack of help they got. And on the other hand, you're in-home workers who see that the shortage of funds in order for them to be able to have a reasonable wage, a reasonable contract, has prevented them from providing services to us disabled individuals, which on the other hand, makes our living situation a lot worse and has a potential of either having us evicted from our homes or having the IHSS workers being evicted from their homes. And I'm sure with the county's distress over homeless situation, crime, drug dealing and alcohol abuse and people camping out at the parkway and camping out in McDonald's and this sort of stuff going on, I'm sure you'd recognize that a stitch in time here would save nine and that the wages of the IHSS workers and the availability for IHSS services for disabled people is of great importance to prevent a bad situation from getting worse. And so I wish to stand here and speak on behalf of the SEIU and of disabled individuals, one whom I myself, and on behalf of the workers, a lot of whom were here today and had to leave because of their disabilities and their workers' time limits had expired, they had to go. And I thank you for your time, sir.
Well, and thank you for staying, thank you for speaking on behalf, I know, again, a great number of people, probably, you know, 75 or 100 folks that were here earlier today and obviously we speak on behalf of those who received the care, but also caregivers as well. And I know we are in negotiations, I know that some of us have been visited by some of the representatives from SEIU and some of the caregivers and as well as those who are recipients and appreciate you highlighting those issues because, again, they're very real, certainly for you and for this community and we'll certainly take that into account as we continue to work through the contract for our, you know, compensation for our IHSS workers.
Appreciate the bold statement.
Thank you very much. Did you want to speak?
I didn't write a paper.
You can come on, that's all right. You're the last two remaining, so.
Well, I've been an in-home care worker since-
So just tell us who you are if you don't mind.
Oh, my name is Tabitha Otterston. And I've been an in-home care worker since 2007. I have had various clients with different disabilities, different challenges that would have loved to, you know, stay in their home and not have to be in a hospital or hospice care, which those are also good too. But I think the program is important because a lot of the times, people don't have family or close friends around and so even I'm going back to school to do further certificates and stuff because I know a lot of people might not be certified as like RN nurses or CNAs. And so I guess they're understanding why the income is 1080 and I know they were trying to say, hey, well, are we able to get, you know, a higher rate of pay because we do all the grunge work, we do different things of, you know, taking, assisting people to their appointments, to cleaning up after, you know, to making sure that they're taken care of. So it's a great job and it takes a lot of time and effort and energy and I wouldn't change anything for the world of my choice because I've done retail, I've done janitorial, I've done a lot of stuff in my work experience. So I just appreciate that there is a program in place. People do, can depend on other people and other people are there and their heart is there for people. So I just appreciate that that program doesn't get cut because there's been words saying, oh, well, they're trying to cut the Medicare, they're trying to cut the program, so it's got everybody high-strung.
They're moving on edge, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay, well, thank you for staying for what you do and for your screen, making choice to serve others as you do. And again, I think both of you speak to obviously the importance of it from a couple different perspectives, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. And Jeffrey Tardigie, I guess Jeff had to leave? Jeff left? Okay. So anybody else that I missed? Oh, yeah, sure, Ms. Ross, okay, you're welcome to speak, sure, off agenda?
Okay.
Okay, Russell.
I've been thinking about this for a year, so this is a year in formulation. As I said, I'm the chairman of the Locke Management Association and we're just a nuts and bolts organization. That's all we do, we're simple, we're volunteers, we're not paid. We don't write our checks. All our money goes to an accountant. They write the checks, we look at them, make sure they're signed, we sign them. That's it. There's no subterfuge, there's no hidden agenda. We post our meetings, we follow the Brown Act. It's difficult to follow the Brown Act, but I like it. I like to play stud poker, open-handed and watch people bet. I don't let any of these guys do like this. I'm not that guy. I'm also a chairman who likes to run meetings. I like to facilitate, get everybody involved. For six years, we've had one person successfully use the county agencies against us and we get no help. She has called the health department, the zoning department, the building department, the code enforcement, the DA, the sheriff's department, the county council, the fair political practice committee twice, the grand jury and HUD. It cost us $5,000 to defend ourselves against HUD. The DA multiple times, they call us. We're constantly writing letters, we're a formal body, what are the tensions? Yes, sir, no, sir. And this person, it's like being in a ring with no rules. This person's like, we're queens, okay, we have to, no hitting below the belt. This is an MMA fighter who's kicking us, faming us, lying. I mean, there's a great quote, "Give a lie a 24-hour head start and the truth will never catch up." And what do you do with a lie? There's nothing, it's a zero. There are no two sides to this. You have a lie on one side and the reality of the truth on the other. That's not two sides. And most of us are human beings, I am, I always believe in two sides. Oh, what's your side? What's your side? But while one side's totally made up, what do you do with that? So I'm frustrated. I mean, I can't tell you, I live with Deborah, who is the secretary, and she's constantly, she'll spend four to six hours a day answering. For example, we've been given a bathroom. Well, that bathroom is an attractive nuisance. Drug dealers are in there, there's drugs, there's clean, there's blood, there's clothes, they smash it, they break the windows, they start fires in it, we had to repaint it, they break the locks. And then she'll schedule for a lock and, okay, meet the guy, he doesn't show up, meet the guy, he shows up, he doesn't have the part, meet the guy, oh, get the part, wait for mail letter, oh, wait. One little problem. I mean, and this goes on and on, there's no end to it. I don't know what you can do about it. I know that the bodies, the bureaucratic bodies are formal and they're required to answer. But, you know, when you get letters from the DA, again, I mean, she posted her agenda 72 hours. We're rigid about Brown Act. When I was chair, I had, I had, you still know, he's gone, I had a lawyer for five meetings explain the Brown Act. I've read the Brown Act three or four times. But when it comes to answering it, I don't know. They say, well, that's not Davis Sterling. Well, I'm not a lawyer, you're lucky, this is a nice meeting. You have a county council, you have lawyers, you have a sheriff in the back to protect you. We have none of that. This person brings in big men who are angry, who met her on the street, made us out to be monsters and they sit there like this. And it's horrible, the meetings are horrible. The reason there's no one on the committee, no one wants to be on the committee, no one wants to upset this person. So, I mean, I talked to an owner yesterday, he wants to, first right of refusal, he wants to sell his building and get his brother off, they're 50/50, but he doesn't know he can afford it. So he wants a 25% share sold to somebody else, so he gets some money out of it and he's going to buy his brother out. First right of refusal, does it come into effect? I don't know. What do I do? And we've been involved with a six-year litigation with this person, she just goes on. She appeals, 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 appeal. I mean, what do we do? We're stuck. I mean, we're committed, we're not backing down, we're going through. We can't help but do that. That's what happens when you get involved in litigation. But I don't know, we don't get help. When she calls, I swear to you, the county's down there in a day. We get a letter the next day, we get a phone call immediately. I mean, while a person's fixing something, the code enforcement shows up. We called on parking on Main Street and the sheriffs came, this is not our road. Then it was, what it was, was a car. Her car is abandoned on Main Street, it hasn't moved in six months, she's blocking a whole business. And she won't move it. And the sheriffs say, well, we don't have time. We get no help. We had an abandoned car from, actually the woman who spoke, she abandoned a car on our property for 10 years. We called code enforcement, code enforcement, they finally came down, we finally kept calling them. So she moved it a day late. So they fined who? Us, $438 because it was on our property. I mean, this is the kind of relationship we've had with the county for six, seven years. We don't get help. We're alone down there, we're a small body and these laws, I mean, we're in court, I mean, this is litigation, this is, we watch what we say, we're under constant attack and the negative attitudes, I mean, fell on the back. He moved out of town, he doesn't even live, he shows up to attack us. I mean, I don't know what to do, I don't know what you can do, I don't know, but just to tell you, as I said, this has been a year inside of me to come before you and speak and it's kind of nice that we're here, just us. But it's really nice to see a meeting well-run, all the questions are intelligent, they're well-thought-out, you had time, no one shouted you down.
Well, you have to come back and, because that happens.
Well, the meeting today was great. So anyway, thank you for allowing me the time to get it off my chest and let you know what's happening in Locke. I mean, we volunteer, I've got probably $25,000, and I'm exaggerating in tools. I bought two tractors, I have a bulldozer, I have a zero clearance mower, I mow the lawns, I rototill all the gardens in the spring for everybody. I mean, I bought five weed eaters, well, three weed eaters because I couldn't find one that would keep running. Husqvarna, four-cycle, the best. Everybody borrows it.
Shameless plug in for the Husqvarna.
Anyway, that's it. And I believe in the town, I've lived there since, off and on, since '73. I knew everybody, James knows, everybody in that book I knew. I knew, I talked to them. So it's just hard to watch people just attack us and on lies, it's all made up and it's an attitude that, ah, anyway, thank you for listening.
Okay, thanks, Russ. We're going to have a community meeting, we'll be down shortly, so, thanks.
Okay, great. And hopefully show up with a sheriff and a moderator who's very good at quieting down.
Mr. Gill will be the moderator.
So make sure you have somebody there who really is really expert in dealing with that kind of issue.
Okay, thank you. Okay, gentlemen, back. I think it's our last off-agenda. Good evening.
My name is Ernie Wester. For the last 14 years-
For the last 14 years, I've been a resident of Locke. I just moved out last January. I was a member of the LMA Board from 2011 till 2013, and I could sit here and spiel at you that there are no two sides. There's not the right side, the lie and the truth. There is the truth, and there can be multiple lies going at the same time. So I could stand up here and lie to your face, someone else can stand before you and lie to your face. How do you distinguish the truth? What I come before you to ask is that you, as a board, send out yourselves to talk to the people of Locke, but also if you could send out a questionnaire to every single property owner in the town of Locke and ask them to rate the performance of the LMA through all the years it has been in existence, and also send out a questionnaire to those people who have sat the board, asking about their experience being part of the LMA Board. Do you know that there are five people that stood up and walked out of the building frustrated at their experience on the board and refused to finish their term? There have been vacancies since 2011. Have you been informed? It's falling apart, and the town has no respect. That could be a lie on my part. I'm asking you to be diligent and do some homework, and really look into the situation in the town of Locke, and what can happen to improve the governing of that town. Thank you.
Thanks, Ernie. Okay. That's the last speaker for today, then we turn to Mr. Gill. Do you have any announcements?
Nope.
All right, colleagues, sorry, Ms. Frost, you have?
We have appointments.
We do have appointments, yeah, I mean, item 40. Okay, we can do that. I know you're also eager for that.
So item number 40, you are continuing to December 5th, Adult and Aging Commission, Children's Coalition, Rio Linda, Alberta Community Planning Advisory Council, continuing to December 12th Cemetery Advisory Commission, County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Consumnis, County Service Area 4C, Delta, Consumnis Area Community Planning Advisory, Fair Oaks Cemetery District, Local Childcare Planning and Development Council, Sacramento County Redevelopment Successor Agency Oversight Board, Sacramento Environmental Commission, and the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. And for today, you have five boards to consider nominations. Cardova Community Planning Advisory Council.
Okay, District 4. Did you have any?
I'm Orangeville.
But you have a District 4 seat that's.
All my others are pushed to 1212.
Okay, all right. And then for District 5, I would nominate Gloria Mattis and recommend waive process and point. Okay, move in second, please move.
Ms. Frost, can you cast your vote?
Just for Gloria Mattis.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay. Next is the Disability Advisory Commission.
Disability Advisory Commission.
Okay, the chiefs of Casper's Medical Info on recruitment process, and they recommend to continue all these to January 9th, 2018.
Okay. Next is the Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council Supervisor Frost.
Judy Berger.
Okay.
Nominate Judy Berger.
And I have a note that you want to continue the remaining to December 12th.
Correct.
Okay. And then Public Health Advisory Board Supervisor Nativi.
Yes, I have a note that the interview is pending with one of the applicants, so continue that to December 12th.
Okay. And then we have Sacramento County Mental Health Board Supervisor Serna.
I'd like to nominate Marina Padilla Castro and waive the process, please.
Okay.
And then please continue the remainder to January 9th.
All right. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present, and then Supervisor Frost.
Mental health.
Mental health.
I do not have communications, so I'm assuming continue to 1212.
I do have some notes which show to nominate Mark Rogers.
Okay, great. You're one step ahead.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. And that concludes your nominations.
Okay. Any other matters can be raised before I go to board members? That's it? Okay. Supervisor Frost, any?